All right, well, we will get started with our student of the month awards. I'd like to come around here for these and shake hands with our special students. So I'll call your name and you can come up and stand here and I'll give you your certificates. Our first student of the month this month is Owen Davidson. One up Owen. You're all getting up here on your level. How about that? Hi Owen, can you talk a little bit about yourself? What school are you in?
CRIS.
CRIS, what grade are you in?
First.
First grade. And who's your teacher?
Miss Anne.
Who is it?
Miss Anne.
Miss Anne. All right, well, congratulations Owen on being a student of the month. Can I shake your hand? All right, here's your certificate. Congratulations.
Oh, that's great.
You got it.
Right. Our next student of the month is Arlet Maraz. Arlet. Ooh. You've got a nice look. You can turn around this way so your parents can see you and maybe take a picture and I'll sit down here with you. Tell us a little bit about yourselves, Arlet. What school do you text me? Crystal River. And what grade are you in? All right, who's your teacher?
It's Courtney.
It's Courtney. What's your favorite thing about school? Math activities? All right, well, that's great. I'm glad to hear that you're really interested in math and I'm not surprised you're just student of the month. That sounds great. Can I shake your hand? All right, here's your certificate. Right there. Congratulations. Two other student of the month awards to give out. The next one is Alison Burgos Contreras. Alison here? And the last one is Kayden Work. Is Kayden here? All right. Kayden? I don't have to get down on my knees. Kayden, tell us a little bit about yourself. What school and grade are you?
I'm in eighth grade. I live in Las Monts.
Awesome. And what's your favorite thing at school? Like, is there subjects you like?
I mean, I like everything, you know. But I mean, math is a little bit.
Cool. Well, your, your, uh, principal or one of your teachers wrote on here, they said Kayden is a kind person who quietly goes about his business and contributes so well to our. It's a lot to be proud of.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Raleigh, did you want to get a picture of these students of the month? So Raleigh's here from the Sopra Sun and he'll take a picture out in the lobby. Yeah, we'll be on the rest of our meeting. Thanks for being here. Congratulations. All right. We will go ahead and start with roll call, please.
I'll get my mic on.
Ben Baumhuck.
Here.
Chris Hassig.
Here.
Lonnie Kitchen.
Here.
Colin Laird.
Yeah.
Marty Silverstein.
Here.
Erica Sparhawk. Luisianas.
Here.
Okay, and Erica did let me know she was unable to be here due to some family issues this evening. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. It's a pretty big one, so we have accounts payable. We also have resolution number one, which is posting of public meetings. Special event liquor license for Sopra Sun wine tasting. Liquor license renewal for Carbondale Clay Center. Liquor license renewal for Plaskies. Liquor license renewal for Carbondale Arts. Meeting minutes from November fourteenth and November twenty-first and November twenty-eighth and December fifth. Um, you know, there was one that I noticed, I meant to tell you this morning, um, on the vote, I think it was our last meeting, but it was the vote where Colin recused himself, where we were voting to send the letter to Dola. It was recorded as a seven oh vote. So just to correct that, I can't remember, I didn't write it down, which meeting that was. Okay, thanks. So just to correct the December fifth meeting minutes to reflect that Colin, it said in the notes that Colin recused himself, but then the vote was recorded as seven zero. Any other corrections or discussion items on the consent agenda?
No move to approve the January ninth consent agenda.
Motion by Lonnie, second by Chris. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Uh, next item is persons present not on the agenda. So if you'd like to address the board, just general public comment um, on anything that we're not going to be discussing tonight, you can approach the mic here.
Question, very simple.
Okay, can you use the microphone, please? Because we have people online and we take minutes and all that. So and you can just use the mic and introduce yourself, please.
My name is Bob Myers. I'm a resident, um, near the rodeo grounds.
Okay.
So I'm here about your agenda item, uh, C or E.
Yep.
About the, uh, and I'm not sure if we're going to get this chance to speak to any of the issues that you'll be discussing at that point in the meeting. So I just wanted to be here to make sure that I got the ability to.
Sure. I mean, I think it'd be great if you want to go ahead and give us your comment now. That's going to be really late in the agenda when we get to that. And if you want to stay and listen in and we might take some comment then, but I think if you have some specific points, now's a good time.
Okay, the, uh, that'd be great because then I don't have to sit waiting till eight o'clock.
That's totally fine. Yeah.
Um, you know, going through the packet, if I get to the right place. Uh, you are obviously because of the special events committee. Uh, you are aware of the, the law enforcement issues, the parking issues and the problems that we've had uh, with trash and, and, you know, people running around our neighborhood after the rodeo. And I very much expect the town of Carbondale and, and Garfield County to get the law enforcement things squared away. If there's anything that happens that like potentially happened at Glenwood Gaverns. We don't know what the response is. We've asked for a plan, but we really haven't heard anything. In November, we were talking about having a joint meeting somehow with the county commissioners and/or the sheriff and the police chief. And obviously nothing has happened as yet, but that is critical. We need enforcement out there. We need a legal authority. Because there is no, it's not Carbondale city limits. The Carbondale police that are there have absolutely no authority unless they observe a crime. And I don't know that how much arrest authority they may not have, not have in the county. It's not part of the town. And then the traffic is, is abysmal. And my suggestion is that you have the, the shuttles go around and enter from Highway one hundred, come back out on Willow Lane and go back on Highway County Road one hundred. And have a sign right at the other entrance to the rodeo where those trucks, trucks should be coming out. It says, no event parking beyond this point. I mean, we get inundated with parking and there's been no enforcement. There have been altercations, there have been incidents. I haven't witnessed any of those incidents personally, but they've been recounted. My wife told me that someone kicked our fence in and there was a deputy nearby, but it was, nothing could happen. So it's, it's critical that law enforcement and there be authority out there. It has a demonstrable presence. And if you're trying to defer people from parking on County Road one hundred, signs are great. But if there's no enforcement, you end up training people to not pay attention to the regulations that have been established by the county. County Roden Bridge is worried about County Road one hundred. We're worried about it. It's dark out there. People coming back from the rodeo are working and walking around in black clothes. It's going to be a a liability nightmare as far as I'm concerned. Your county, your town attorney and the county attorney should also be fairly concerned about that liability that may occur. Having a special event and having getting, you know, because there's no parking enforcement.
Yeah.
And I know Larry is concerned about the trash. That, that, you know, hopefully the bear proof thing has happened. We haven't seen it completely yet, but you know, even with, with the skaters and, and stuff in the winter time, there's trash. So the special events are a problem and we want to make sure that we get this parking stuff resolved.
Okay.
And we don't want to, we want to do it cooperatively. We don't want to do it adversarially.
Yeah.
And if, it's been two years plus.
Yeah. All right. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Would anyone else like to address the board? Uh, just open public comment. You can, as Bob did, if you don't want to stay till eight o'clock and you want to, um, talk about that now, that's fine too. It's not a formal public hearing on that item, but we will take input from people who are here.
Good evening. I'm Richard Votero. I live, uh, in downtown Carbondale. And, um, I'm, uh, saying tonight that, um, we're leaving Carbondale as we know it. So we have, uh, historic downtown Carbondale. It's a pretty magical place. And I know we all really appreciate it. It just shows. So we have the other side of Carbondale is out on one thirty-three. So modern America suburban has landed out there. And it's a dramatic contrast to what we have downtown. This is just a completely different environment. And I think that what's going to happen with the Forest Service building coming in. It's going to kind of meld the two together. For me, that's a bad thing. I like the feeling of our downtown. I live downtown, so I'm in it all the time. And I know that Glenwood and other towns have really completely had their character or very close to completely erased for different, different obvious reasons. And so we, you know, we don't have the traffic to deal with. And, and that's a blessing. One thing I'm going to say about the Forest Service lot is they ought to just go ahead and take down all three of the pine trees. Because what's going to happen is with the destruction of the foundation of the older buildings. The root system in the tree on the corner is going to get disturbed sufficiently that that tree will probably go in a couple of years or less. And so they ought to just save the trouble and the damage and just take them all three out. And that way, uh, you know, the Forest Service building will just be on the corner by itself. It's unfortunate that we didn't experience cooperation with the federal government. And it's nothing, you know, it's not, nothing new. We have an example here of an ongoing struggle or an ongoing problem with the Forest Service with the Thompson Divide. What are we eighteen, twenty years into that? To get some, some property that's unique, middle elevation protected. It's, it's really, really sad that the citizens and citizens of a country have so much difficulty in cooperating with the federal government. And I'm sad about that. I, I, I really enjoy knowing that the Civilian Conservation Corps came here in nineteen thirty-eight. Young men. Eighteen, seventeen, no job. And were sent here by the federal government. And look what they built, standing eighty-three years. And it's going to be wiped away.
Thanks, Richard. What do you, what else like to address the board on anything not on the agenda tonight?
My name is Kevin. I've been a resident of Carbondale for about five years.
Can you say what's your last name, Kevin, for the record?
Woodward.
Thanks, Kevin.
And, uh, you know, pardon me, it's my first time, uh, getting involved in a meeting here.
Good to be here.
Um, wasn't sure if this made the agenda or not. Um, so figured I'd go ahead and ask. And obviously recently we've had, you know, quite a few, um, state and even national or quite a bit of state and national attention about an influx of, you know, migrants into the community. And so I was just kind of wondering what kind of steps were being taken by Carbondale to kind of deter uh, more migrant influx and maybe push out some of the unhoused migrants that are coming to the, to the area. More of a question and looking for resources really than, you know, stating a, a point, but you know, it, obviously we want to be a welcoming community in, in town. Um, but if people are coming up here with no plans to live, house or, or work, that creates obviously a massive drag on, on our community. So just kind of curious what our plan was to deter that influx.
Okay, thanks, Kevin. Yeah, we don't usually get into a back and forth during this comment period. We're going to be discussing that at, um, kind of near the end of the agenda, so it's late. You're welcome to stay or pay attention online. I'm actually going to have a full, uh, update that I submitted to the Sopra Sun today in the paper on, um, Thursday, so I encourage you to pick that up. Um, and then we have a section on our website where it really lays out kind of what our goals are and what our actions are so far.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, anyone else like to address the board? Anybody online? Nope. Okay. Well, we will move on then. Thank you for those comments and questions. Um, to trustee comments.
One, and I'll keep it real short.
Okeydoke.
Uh, of note is, well, let's see. It's going to be on the detox center. Let me get my notes here. First of all, a quick thank you to the trustees who responded with a thumbs up or thumbs down, um, on admitting Pickens County to the Detox Withdrawal Center partnership. Uh, so with that, I cast Carbondale's vote to approve. Um, discussions are now ongoing between Mind Springs leadership with Pickens and Garfield Counties. Um, that governance expects an update on later this month. Um, of note is that if this moves forward, uh, the project will likely become more of a Mind Springs managed program rather than a Garfield County Public Health Initiative. Um, in the meantime, Garfield DPH has been doing a great job, uh, leading the clinical elements of the center, including a newsletter that's designed primarily at this point to keep the referral sources and member entities updated. Um, but would eventually go out to the public, much like the other newsletters that Garfield County publishes. With that, the next meeting will be an onsite walkthrough to see the exterior work that's now completed, uh, which includes the difficult ambulance turnaround, uh, area. So again, thanks to the Roaring Fork School District for allowing the realignment of their bus fans. Uh, the projected opening is still slated, uh, for late April with the inside structure ready. Before that is they'll have a month then to do the new hire training once all systems are in place and functional. And then finally, on the project, there is still a capital equipment shortfall that Mind Springs has asked the contributors to consider by reallocating operating funds to CapEx, which I rejected on our behalf. Um, we have numerous financial objectives to meet and I wasn't inclined to disrupt an already carefully crafted budget, even if just to reclassify one line item. Um, plus if we do this once, it could lead to another task. Um, if additional capital needs persist. So by leaving it as is, um, after April, you can simply reference the terms of the original signed agreement and obviate further conversation. And that's the update I'll give tonight. Thank you.
Excellent. Other trustee comments? Marty? Okay. Um, I would just add, as I, uh, mentioned to Kevin just now, that I spent a lot of time, um, crafting an update to the community um, about kind of where we've been and where we're go, where we are and where we're going is how I framed it, um, to go into the Sopra Sun, uh, this week. There's been a lot of activity, uh, on a daily basis that, um, Lauren is aware of, Colin's aware of, I'm usually aware. Um, but I understand that, uh, the rest of the board isn't always up speed on every detail, um, of what's going on with the, the migrant, you know, response. So we'll, we'll discuss it more at the end of the meeting, but, um, I had a conversation with Marty about, you know, feeling kind of caught off guard by some things and, and I, I want to avoid that. Um, so I'm always open to, you know, conversation, whatever, whatever you need. But we do have to just kind of keep moving forward with things. We do get a lot of press inquiries. We're generally now focused on, uh, local media inquiries only. Um, the state and national, um, outlets don't, they, they give us more attention than we need and don't really do us any favors on this issue. Um, and so that'll, we'll continue to inform the community through local outlets, but, um, I think that was my only update. Colin, did you have anything? Okay. Uh, well, we will move along then to attorneys' comments. Mark, anything?
Oh, thank you.
All right. Uh, Lauren, managers' comments.
Thank you. Um, I will save, I have a lot of comments about the newcomers and, uh, what's happening with that. Um, but I will save that for the agenda item. What I have, um, that I just want to give the board a little bit of an inkling about. I did get an email from Andy Corber today, um, with a little bit of an update about what's happening. They're doing schematic design for the pool. They want to get schematic design pricing so that they're more exact. But she wanted to let us know that the last time they were here, one of the things that they were doing was, um, not only dealing with all of the things that were talked about in the meeting with regard to five lanes versus six lanes versus twelve foot pool, et cetera, but, um, also they were doing a lot of, um, research about how many trees would have to be lost, particularly with what's going on with Forest Service property. And so they decided to reach for maximize tree savings. So with that, they went back to look at whether or not they could shrink the building, but add a basement for the mechanicals. And so that's what they're looking into right now. They said, um, that obviously the basement idea has pros and cons. The major point in the pro column is saving precious little site space and saving mature trees that have importance to the community and our Main Street vibe in general. Especially with the tree removal at the Forest Service that the aquatic site will have a higher level of scrutiny. On the con side, more trees mean less PV. Um, they get in the way of the solar. Um, and there's a possibility that the basement may have cost impacts, but initial feedback was that that cost in, increase could be either zero or minimal. They said, uh, they need to get schematic design pricing to get a sense of what the project will cost regardless. So that's what the status is right now. They should have schematic design drawings available in early February, but they're always available for trustee meeting. So I just wanted to pass that along, uh, so that you didn't get a yet another all trustees email that somebody might feel like they had to be responsive to.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? All right. Guess we got all our comments. Uh, so moving on to action items. Uh, first action item is a public hearing for a liquor license change of location for Cripple Creek Back Country. Which is the applicant and the address is five eighty-two Highway one thirty-three and the proposed address is five seventy-one Highway one thirty-three.
It should be online.
I only see buildings, see, and, uh, I'm assuming that's Evergreen Post Dave.
Okay, the applicant's not here.
No, it looks like he's not here.
Can you give us an overview of, um?
Yeah, it's really just a location change. They're moving from one side of one thirty-three over to the Basalt Bike and Ski location on the other side of one thirty-three.
Okay.
They're closing one location and combining Cripple Creek with Basalt Bike and Ski.
Okay. All right. I mean, I, I think we can consider this even without the applicant here. It's a pretty straightforward application. Um, so we'll just do the regular help, public hearing process. Any trustees have questions for staff? I'll open that to the public. Uh, this is a public hearing on a, um, change of location for Cripple Creek Back Country's liquor license. Would anybody in the public like to address us on this? Okay, if not, we'll close the public hearing. Uh, any discussion?
I've been there. I've seen it. So I, I'd move to approve the change of location.
Second.
Motion by Lonnie, second by Luis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next one, I think, is what most people just walked in for is the public hearing on Town Center, um, Chaffa application from, and we have a nice packet from Art Space on this and a good amount of time to discuss it. So hand it over to the team and, um, I'll just note that, uh, there's not a recommended motion in the packet, but there is a, uh, once mine loads up here.
Thank you.
Time to make a motion. Um, on the last paragraph of the first page, wow, of the packet, um, in bold. There's basically a recommended motion. So that's where we hope to end up is to authorize submission of a tax credit financing application to Chaffa. So we'll need a motion on that, um, tonight, if we're so inclined. All right. Andrew, you look ready to go?
I'm a board trustee. Uh, thanks again for having us in.
Red light on?
Yeah, red light on.
All right. Perfect.
I usually don't have a problem being heard.
Yeah.
I do know you want to pick it up on the mics. Um, so, uh, you know, happy again to be in front of, uh, the board. Uh, we're mostly tonight presenting updates to, uh, the drawings of which you have seen, uh, a variety of iterations, but this is essentially comprising uh, close to the final form, what we intend to submit with that Chaffa application. And so just a quick update since our, our last meeting when we approved in concept, at least as far as unit mix, et cetera. We've continued to work on the art space side and developing that model, getting all the submission elements ready. So, you know, market studies and uh, working property management, getting, uh, letters from funders, et cetera, as we're working through the design piece and getting all the numbers pulled together. So that's moving along nicely. Um, I don't have any expectation that we won't be in a good position to submit come February. Um, and again, as you highlighted, uh, Mr. Mayor, at the, um, conclusion here, we will be asking for at least a consensus on, um, or a concurrence to submit the application as we're presenting the, the design. And we're prepared to move forward on that and happy to, of course, answer any questions related to that or anything else in the process. And I will otherwise hand it off to the design team.
Thank you, Andrew. Um, I, I did want to note that we are going to um, present things this evening that are about the schematic design for the project for the LIHTC, uh, submission allocation. And that there are some other things we want to talk about tonight, which is, uh, related to the promenade and the kind of development of the promenade as a, as a concept and as a whole. And so we're, we're going to have a, a building and Lytec presentation. And then we would like to stop and have a discussion and have the, the motion and the vote and then come back with whatever additional time we have before the board this evening to talk about the, uh, concept development for the promenade. Okay?
Sounds good. Yeah, and this first part is a public hearing, so we'll ask our questions. We'll open it up to the public. Anybody can speak. We'll deliberate and then we'll vote and then we'll move on into the promenade.
So we'll start with the architecture and I, I can say that a lot of things haven't changed since you saw them a month ago, four weeks ago. Um, I think literally and figuratively, the, the concept has become clearer and clearer. And I think you've noticed in the imagery that we've provided that each time the focus is a bit more sharp and things are a bit more real. Uh, and a bit, a bit, a bit easier to understand as the project has come together. And so we want to start, uh, just with this program breakdown to note that nothing has changed in the program. We are still seeking funding for thirty-nine units. There are still thirty-one units on the Sixth Street side of the site and eight units on the promenade side and two thousand square feet of commercial space on the promenade side. And the same unit mix that we've presented the last couple of times we've been here, where about half of the units are two bedroom units. Um, another quarter of the units are one beds and then the remaining last quarter is split between three bedrooms and studios. Next. Moving to the next. Okay, the, this is, the site plan has remained largely unchanged. The, the primary structure is along Sixth that contains the residential units. And then the mixed use project is along the promenade. The parking count has remained the same. The one change that has happened since the meeting we had before you back in December was at the northwest corner of the site where it's noted as the transit stop. There was some discussion about how that really was going to be used and what would the effect of that space would be. And after discussion as a, as a design and development team, we decided that actually what was most needed at that location was still a space that, that worked effectively as a transit stop. But additional garden and landscape space that would buffer the northwest corner of the site and really help, um, provide some additional mediating elements between. the three-story structure that we're proposing along Sixth and Colorado and the residential neighborhood that exists kitty corner across the intersection to the northwest. So go to the next. A little bit of a lag here. So this is as the view, it's very similar to what we presented last month, except that you can see that the building, there's a second-story amenity space that covers the transit area, the transit stop area, a place for people to sit undercover and wait for the bus. And that volume has gotten a bit smaller. It's pulled back to the south a bit to open up more space between that two-story element and the street in order to allow a larger garden and landscape zone there at the corner again as a buffer between the project that we're developing and the residential neighborhood to the northwest. And also just to provide some additional outdoor green space for the residents of of this structure in particular. And you can see we've we're starting to develop some concepts for landscape there, and Heather will speak to that in just a little bit. Next. This is an image that you haven't seen before. This is the primary residential entry into the building off of Sixth Street. I think if you remember, we expressed and showed a concept where there was a deep recess in the building along Sixth that helps to split that single structure into visually two structures, one of which was on the south side and had a lot of brick on it, and one of which was on the north side and had a more residential character with sloped roofs and wood or cement fiber siding. This is looking into that recess. The the entry doors are on the ground floor on the right. There's a large garage door element that allows the the interior common area there in the lobby to open out into this landscape zone. And then immediately to the left, you can see the brick volume that has a couple of studio units in it. And you can see that there's a concept in there about how art can be introduced into the building. And Ramsey will be addressing that here in just a little bit. And the architecture of this entry is meant to recall and really reflect what's happening on the entry over on the promenade so that although they're slightly different, they share a common language and there are common elements that kind of draw the two buildings together into one whole as a as a residential community. And this is very similar to the images you've seen the last couple of months that we've been in here to present. This is on Sixth, looking north towards Colorado. And again, the the south end of the structure has a two-story brick element that really responds to the character and quality of Carbondale Main Street. And then as the building moves to the north, the character changes and becomes more residential in nature as it approaches the the residential neighbor off neighborhood off to the northwest. And with that, I'll turn it over and Ramsey will start.
Okay. Thanks, JV. Hi, everyone. This slide we threw in there is sort of a representation of a real desire we had of to try to make this project even more Carbondale than maybe it was at our first schematic designs and thinking back into into some of the Shret sessions we had and some of the feedback we've heard and idea of this being an art space and serving the creative community. And really kind of taking a vantage point of looking at art for the people and something that Carbondale has been very successful in doing with the Artway, with painting of painting of Main Street during the COVID pandemic. And the mural on the side of Chaco's Park, things like that, that we're we've really been expressive in our way of sort of outwardly focusing on our love of art and our expression of it. And so we wanted to sort of queue into this kind of a theme as we further articulate the building and use it as an opportunity to say, we're going to create some intentional canvases around the building, some areas where artwork can be integrated. We aren't sort of trying to depict here exactly what that artwork is going to be, but just show representations that hopefully the arts community and the local arts institutions would embrace this idea of instead of taking walls and areas that are less inspiring in the town and sort of figuring out, hey, how do we make that a better thing? We're sort of taking a different approach where we're saying, hey, well, we do have a great piece of architecture here, but it'd be even better if we had intentional places where we had plans in the long term to incorporate artwork into the architecture. Whether that happens right away or whether that unfolds over a number of years and becomes this this living and and growing part of the of the building that people can celebrate over time. We're not determining, we're just kind of showing the idea here. So this is a this is a vantage point of across the vacant field that a lot of, you know, that's fenced off, but a lot of kids use for play outside LaRaz and Papino's. And sort of looking back at the Southwest Promenade Building and the Sixth Street building with a vertical mural opportunity there that we're showing as well as sort of some some really fun way of sort of finally coming to a full story of how how great and expressive this sky bridge space could be. Once again, we aren't saying that that's exactly what it would look like, but we thought that's a great representation of just how much flavor and sort of vibrancy it could it could create for the community. This is then again, sort of another close-up of its sort of location of this new alley we'd be creating going north, south between the two structures and behind Thunder River Theater. And then also some of the pops of color that we introduced the last meeting in the alleyway to kind of make it more vibrant, more of a celebrated space as as opposed to a back-of-house area, which you typically see in alleys. Then with full acknowledgement that, you know, there there could be a lag of time between when the Northwest Promenade develops and the Sixth Street building and a hopeful, hopefully a successful tax credit application here. We did want to sort of make sure that this elevation was one that you guys got a chance to look at and we studied and we made sure that it had an attractive demeanor to it. And, you know, right here is obviously the Thunder River Theater wall. And then this this wall has these pops of vibrant color. We also introduced a sort of an artistic opportunity down at the base to kind of break up the the massing of this element here in a way that we thought was one of those other opportunities we could plug in there. And then over to the promenade. This is a vantage point of the promenade design that you have not seen before, but it's it really hasn't changed in the architectural language that we were showing you last time. As far as the height and proportion, we have added some soldier courses and some little bit of brick detailing, just having fun with sort of further sharpening the design. But then also, this is a good area where you can really start to see how this this brow that sticks out from this protruded commercial entry areas, these little Main Street market pods that are roughly 26 feet wide, sort of creates this opportunity for signage. Now, it could be that in the end, these are all three separate tenants and we want to create three separate signages with separate fields. Or it could be one where it all flows as one sort of message as we're showing here, and this is just a placeholder towards that idea. This this view you've seen and really hasn't changed much, but it is an important view to us and probably to you as well. Kind of looking from what we're calling the Pocket Park across the Thunder River Theater back towards the area of residential entry that has a sort of expressive tower into the into the units and then up next to these market spaces that are protruding out from the residential two stories above. And then once again, looking from the south as you approach the Town Center section of the promenade from Main Street and crossing through that existing alley. This is that vantage point that really hasn't changed a whole lot from what you saw before, besides some minor details. But we are certainly open to hearing any feedback in that and also just acknowledge that, you know, even with a sort of the application we're talking about today, we're very well aware that we are going to go back and talk to the public, even tomorrow night, we have an event where we're going to talk to the public and hear more feedback, and there will be other rounds for this this group and P and Z to have feedback about specific design and and how we portray things. So important to note. And at that, I'm going to sort of go back to the site plan to kind of bring you back out to the the starting place of this presentation tonight and let Heather talk about some landscape and site features.
Thanks, Ramsey. Hey, everybody. Heather Henry, Connect One Design. So this is interesting. You have to shift your minds a little bit. So the architecture has pretty much made its way through schematic. Right? And on a project like this downtown redevelopment, urban design, we let that really get ahead because we have to know how big the buildings are going to be, how they're interfacing, where they're landing on the streets, et cetera. And then we kind of pick up because we want to know what kind of space we have to work with, et cetera. So shift your minds a little bit to thinking now about the site landscape more from the conceptual perspective. We've just dove in, right, to say, okay, their renderings show really fun things and how there might be stuff in the landscape, but what is that stuff actually? The other mindset that you want to think about is how far we have to go for a Lytec application, and it's really not far. It's far enough to know where the site scope is going to be, what some of those improvements are, where our boundaries of actually disturbing things around the building is going to be. And then how we're going to replace those, enough to know how we're going to price this. But a lot of the things that I'm putting in front of you all today are that very beginning of kind of just a little bit of scratch and sniff. Now, we've gone far enough to know what we're going to help and put into the pricing so that we're clear for that. But there's a lot that gets to have input for the site. So we'll go to the next slide. I'm going to talk a little bit about Sixth first because our Shret and I think a lot of conversation is around the promenade, as it rightly should be. But we also have now this amazing residential street that's going to be part of this infill and a really critical component. So we wanted to make sure that we give it the, you know, due benefit of thinking and input as well. And Sixth and Colorado, just that those overall interfaces, for us, there's a few things that are really important. This, like the personality of kind of that future residential and this residential interface. It's different. So that street and and really that that surface and everything, a lot of concrete, let's just be honest, trees and tree grates. It was intended because that was a commercial interface. It was always seen as, you know, it's going to be commercial and we're going to rethink that. So there are two main things that we're looking at on Sixth. One, how do we maybe reclaim some concrete and soften our landscape a little bit here, soften that approach? Both for anyone walking the street as well as our residents. And then now we've got units on this ground floor. So how do we create the privacy for those units? So those are really important. We've got this multimodal transit kind of node, which also may or may not always remain transit. So how is it also this really great corner across from the rec center, et cetera? And then this public-private, these entries, this pass-through, so you'll see that we're calling it the Sixth Street Courtyard. Because we name everything, so then we can follow up with a personality to it. Next slide. So this will again point out some of these ideas for where we need to think about the site. And then for us, this is again, just this beginning of precedent imagery. Some of it coming out of the Shret, some of it now coming out of more kind of detailing and just conversations between us and the architects and what these spaces might look like. So can you actually see the cursor? Yeah, great. Okay. So let's just start for the sake of conversation at kind of our corner of the alley of Sixth and the alley. And really here begins this this idea of walking down the street, right, and interfacing with units on the ground floor. So one of our key components is that we really want to make sure that those outdoor spaces for those residents are separated. So we want to look, and you saw a little bit of that first gesture of it in the architectural renderings, to create these walls essentially, right, privacy. Now, our thought is how can we have some fun with those and allow those to actually express the personality of the residents? So they might be little in-and-out walls. People can, you know, there's a shelf on top. They could put their own container plants. Walls big enough to hide your stuff. So it's also where you're going to park your kid's stroller, et cetera. So those are really important when you think about downtown first-floor living. So that's one of our first components. If you look, we also really want to think about the actual soft scape. So you'll see right adjacent to the parallel parking right now is concrete. It is concrete, trees and tree grates. We're proposing to reclaim some of that. So carefully demo and kind of extricate some of that concrete and bring in more of a planted walk. So get a planting strip in here. Get those trees out of their tree grates potentially. This will be really exciting for us to work with the town and the arborists. Frankly, we've never actually removed that, you know, tree well that they're growing in and see what happens and allow a tree to to kind of, you know, grow up past that. So that's going to be a really fun idea to move forward with. And then you'll see the little nooks up against the building. So you have a private patio and then the ability to have some planting against the building, private patio planting, private patio planting. So really having that dialogue with the facade of the building and the ins and outs that are happening up happening up above will happen in the landscape as well. Bottom left is that idea of how do you reclaim? So you have this walkway planting against the building and then the planting strip against the street. And so we've done that very successfully. And then on our on our corner stop, you know, we're thinking about the recycle station. We've got this really as a courtyard, so it is serving as a transit stop, but it's also just a really beautiful courtyard. So we want to bring in some sculpture. We want to make sure the recycle station is out in the right-of-way, you know, where it needs to be located, but then also some additional bike parking that can just be, you know, for folks headed to the bus, et cetera. And then again, like JV said, using that corner to soften the building. We've got enough now with the changes they made in the architecture to bring another tree in there and between that and the street tree really soften that corner quite a bit. Next slide. So upper left is this corner stop, right? Yeah. So again, what we want to see in the landscape as well are some of these places of whimsy. And so where sculpture, local artists, we can commission someone, you know, to to do the the bench and I envision the guy is holding like a big giant cowboy hat or something instead of an umbrella. So but these are the places to kind of have that whimsy in the landscape that complements what's happening in the building. And then our Sixth Street Courtyard. So that's what genuinely looks like a checkerboard is in fact a checkerboard. So our idea, again, we really want this to be this spill-out space. So as JV said, we've got these roll-up doors. It's also one of the gathering spaces. So inside the building on the second floor is a common area as well. Imagine that's a rooftop deck. There's a lot happening there. People are looking down, circulating up and down, in and out of the building. And when it's not that, how does it also just serve as a little bit of an amenity? We we promised Bob that as we thought about the idea of totlot, that we want our landscapes to be just playful and playful for younger people that are living in the building, playful for older people. So the idea is genuinely, can we bring this checkerboard out here and have a lot of movable furniture, a lot of even movable planters? And then have game board. It's big enough to do youth-sized cornhole. It's big enough to have chess pieces. And those are stored in a little thing inside the building and people can bring them out and and play with those big Lego pieces that kids can play with. And let that space be very changeable, flexible, ethereal in a way. It's this at one time and it's and it's this at another. The idea also is this is to draw people in as the primary entrance, but it's also the spot where you you circulate to the promenade. So you can go through the two doors, through the alley and and on to the promenade and the other community space. Next slide, please. We're going to put a little bit of a pin in the details of the promenade because we're going to go into it in a little bit more detail like those with the images and whatnot. The one of the important components to think about is where our boundaries, let's say, for this Lytec application really are and what does that look like? So two colors, purple and blue. Purple is intended to indicate where we will look at what really the permanent features of this building would be. So you're going to be able to do more, you know, we pour the concrete, there might be fixed planters. We're going to make sure the irrigation utilities are kind of running down that corridor because the blue is torn up as this building is built, replaced in a certain way, but potentially is torn up when the building across from it goes under construction as well. So the blue area is where we're thinking about how to replace that as a usable, beautiful, huge personality promenade, but very, very low cost and essentially in a way that says these are temporary features. So those are kind of those two components of purple and blue. Again, we'll get into like what the fun of that is. But as we develop those final costs, that's kind of what you can think about with those two zones of the promenade outside of the Lytec building and the commercial. building in the commercial space. Okay, thanks.
Now we have a nice little pause to let, let, let there have space for a discussion and let Andrew kind of have, have a floor a little bit as well.
Again, you know, as you said, and I think JV and Heather summed up nicely, you know, now the town has changed what we've shown you before. And again, we're looking for some action to approve of moving forward with this application. Of course, any questions related to what we've shown thus far or what comes next, have to entertain that or wherever the conversation may go.
Great. Thank you for that overview. It's great to see it continue to develop and it's great to see that what you started with, you keep getting positive feedback on and no huge course corrections required. Questions from the board before we open up for a public hearing?
No questions for me. I'm duly impressed. Thank you very much. And also for this packet, it's very helpful. I'm a visual person, so this is very, it speaks to me.
Great.
There's Chris.
So the main floor, you still have a private lobby between the promenade and the checkerboard courtyard, so that, so public, there's no public passage through there essentially, they'd have to go around on the alley, right?
Yeah, so operationally, the way our space typically approaches spaces like that that are residential but sort of quasi-public is we want to make them inviting and acceptable of people coming in off the street, particularly to think about people that might be visiting, potential applicants, folks that might be coming if there's a show or there's a presentation. So we, we typically approach that with access controls, so it might just be, you know, in the course of operations, we, we adjust on that, but with, you know, electronic controls, you could say, 8:00 AM, the doors unlock, 4:00 PM, they lock again. So that could be a space that people could flow through more freely. We've also found sometimes that, you know, and, you know, I'm not expecting that necessarily here in Carbondale, but in other locations it might become problematic, people are entering that shouldn't be there, whatever. We can change that and make that a more locked, more secured space. But what we really always want to do is make sure that residents can come and go freely, feel like it's a home space for them, and interior of that will have, you know, like firm control. So you're not going down corridor into the residential units without a key fob, you're not going up the stairs, you're not going up the elevator, unless you're either a resident with that access or you're with someone who does have that access. So it still, it still does allow some flexibility in that public use, but it ultimately is a residential space as part of the building by with some flexibility to it.
I guess I would just continue thinking about that second layer and like, yeah, if you get to the point in the future where you say, yeah, during the day, we want people to be able to, because I don't know if we want to invest a whole lot of money into this courtyard on the other side, if it, I guess if it's resident-focused, that's, that's fine, but uh, you know, if you have a second layer, maybe that gives you the adaptability in the future to say, maybe the lobby is more, more public and pass-through and there's another level of separation for the upstairs spaces and stuff, but isn't that people crossing into that space?
There's a, a project we completed probably 10, 12 years ago now in Seattle called the Hiawatha Lots, and it has a similar sort of, you know, it's new construction, had this entry space with roll-up doors and that space gets activated very frequently. It's programmed by the residents in that it's part of their building, but they invite in other performers, they invite in outside artists to be part of galleries and presentation when they have gatherings. So it really feels more like, like if you walk into a lobby that happens to have a coffee shop in it, the coffee shop has one spot, but the lobby's the whole thing, it sort of ebbs and flows that way. And that, that really comes about in the way the building gets activated by the residents and how it's embraced. But I think as, as this team has designed it, it allows for that flexibility, particularly if you open up those doors, think about a nice spring or summer day, that could be open all day long and people can come and go and it still allows for that security, that, that sense of home, that separation for the residential, but also advice to help again.
And then on the, so the, on the parking side of things, the, do you envision like a, a basically a rent break for people who, the four units that don't have parking spaces or how do you envision?
So we are not charging for parking at all. That's actually, you know, part and parcel of the, the, the Lytec program. If you charge for parking, then you can include those costs as part of your, your, your application basis. So we don't charge for parking at all. We do have the plan to assign all of the tandem parking to the two and three bedroom units. And what we find generally is that as folks move in, if they have more than one car, they'll either figure out it's in parking on the street or is it a space some people don't have any car. We don't necessarily go on with the hard and fast rule which stalls are for which units and there's some flexibility within management to say, okay, do you need that stall? Another person would like to have it, you know, are you comfortable on the street? So it, it just being four cars not parked out of, you know, 39 units, it doesn't give me a lot of concern. We've parked one-to-one the bulk of our projects, even at Ridgeway, which that community said, we've got a huge parking problem. We did a study and there wasn't one. That's parked one-to-one, so 30, 30 units, 30 stalls, and I've never seen the lot full. So it, it's really going to be, you know, something we can address as we're in the operational phase, but I think we're, you know, from my perspective anyways, more than adequately parked for what I expect it will be.
And you're sticking with the 12-foot ceiling height for the first story?
I'll leave it to the team.
On the commercial side or on the residential side? Well, I, I, I don't know, either, either one, both.
Well, I actually have a, I have a graphic ready for this sort of a question to come up here, if I can.
We can talk about it in the promenade section.
So yeah, we did a promenade section just to sort of better address that. And let me see if I can figure out how to share screen with this up. So this is a, a section at the promenade, just inside the commercial space, showing you that our intentions right now are that, you know, in order to, architecturally, before we really figure out the fine-tuning grading and the betterment of the design through Heather's assistance, which she's already started to come up with better concepts of how this might work, was to actually step the floor plate in order to account for the drop to the north. And so that created a situation where we're hovering between a 10-foot to 11-foot six ceiling height, which at, at the most ends up being about 13 feet from floor to next floor played up. And the code requirement for commercial is 14 feet for that dimension. So that's why we kind of approached this thing as saying, you know, we are identifying that if we are going to follow this curve up here with this 35-foot height limit as something, we're trying not to sort of go into any sort of variance there or alternative compliance in order to sort of match some of the survey data that we received where it, there didn't seem to be a clear indication from the community that that was a good or a bad idea. So we're sort of trying to, trying to not, not necessarily do that. We would sort of like to have the betterment of being able to have nine-foot floor plates or nine-foot floor to ceiling, sorry, on the second and third floor by having a little less ceiling height on the commercial space. And these, once again, if, if these were as deep as the poorhouse, I would, I would probably not be for this solution, but these are, are 22-feet-deep spaces. So you think about, you can think about this space as like a garage. So if, if a garage feels comfortable with a 10-foot ceiling, so will this space as far as the proportions and, and big glass on one side, just like a garage might have facing east, which is great light. So I, I don't see this as, as an issue. But from a alternative compliance standpoint, we wanted to be clear on this as part of our, our current approach, even though obviously with those nine-foot floor, uh, floor to ceilings on the second and third floor, if you were to say no, we could make that adjustment without going over the height limit.
So we, we got some very immediate feedback on this after we were here in December. I think we got about six or seven feet outside the door and had a couple of community members come over and say very explicitly, 35 feet, nothing more. So we had talked about what the difference was in height and what, what that would mean and that Colin, we were going to do some exploration for you and we just barely got out and had a number of people speak to, no, do, do the right thing, 35 feet, don't go any higher, stick to the code, please, so.
So I think that's, I'm, I'm willing to live with that, especially in the context of this application and Lytec stuff, I still think when we get to the later phases of the project, that's something I would like to revisit and, and think about in the context of our larger code question. And then I just have one last comment, sorry, just on the landscape front. Just maybe whether we consider looking into, it's probably cost prohibitive, but there are two very, they're just getting to be really nice ponderosa pine trees at the, right off the south end of that Thunder River Theater and they might, but they might be small enough still that you could move them to the Pocket Park or something, but as we've had a lot of discussion about trees in town, just trying to keep, you know, those are sort of the two real natural assets that the site has at this moment that have not been destroyer or that are not sort of weed trees essentially. And so it might be worth considering whether they could be moved or something and they give you a head start of 15 years on a tree growth. Yeah, it's great.
Thanks, Chris. Other questions from the board before we open it up to the public? Just one question.
Yeah, please.
Just a couple of comments, this looks amazing. Thank you for all your work on this. I think just kind of about the Pocket Park in general. I love how that space is flexible and I wonder if that's something that would be used in the future with art in public places, seems like a natural fit. The other thing, and kind of I'll make a comment because we're also talking about Chaco's Park and I think it's interesting that here we have a space front that opens up to a park and that's something that I know is being discussed as well for, for that plan in that park, so. Yeah, that's my comments.
Okay, thanks Louise. I have a couple of items. Overall, awesome. So none of this is a, is a criticism. We've been focused on code compliant and just refresh my memory on our HCC code does not allow residential on ground floor. How are we, how are we addressing that?
That, that is an alternative compliance and.
Okay, but it's in, it's in our code as alternative compliance, it's not an ex, I didn't think so. So that's a little concerned like, because this is this moment where we put forward the application and I want to make sure that that's not.
That's an alternative compliance that we led our first meeting with you guys is sort of one of the big asks, you know, when we're talking about the South El or all Sixth Street and then it was sort of like, well, you know, the, the, the charrettes and the community sessions we had seemed to have a lot of energy towards, you, you guys really should be asking this question and seeing if this is a go. Our survey information also sort of led us to believe that, thinking that, you know what, and in our discussions in the community before then, that that was a decent sort of way to approach this. So we opened up by saying, hey, let's, um, let's, let's go ahead and ask. And so with that ask, we were sort of notioning that it is an alternative compliance and on top of alternative compliance to have it there, we'd also be sort of looking for the pocket of code that, that leads towards more commercial use on the main level. Also have some leniency when we get down to, to UDC compliance issues because it is a residential frontage, it's not a commercial frontage, a lot of that stuff doesn't even apply anymore. And I'd, I'd be happy to have Bob if he wants.
I have a really technical question with the application. I, I'm not questioning the direction that we've given you.
Sure.
Yeah, I think I can address that, so.
You can come up if you want, you're part of the team, so feel free to, there's just not a seat at the table, but.
So specific to the Lytec application, there's a question that, that CHAF asks is, is it properly zoned? If not, what steps must be taken? And so Bob and, and working with city staff, or we've, we've crafted that letter, which will be refined and that will actually go in along with the CHAF application and it will lay, lay out that yes, we're in compliance on this, this and the other thing. We could pull an, an application for land use, which will then bring forward all of those formal requests, at which time those will be, you know, reviewed, approved, come through process, after which building permit can be issued. And so that goes in with the application, it lays out to CHAF that as drawn, there are some asks that will be coming. The indication from, from the board and from staff is that those are supported, but need to come through that process, after which a building permit can be, can be issued. And that's, that's common when we go into these applications. A lot of sites aren't zoned properly and so you go in saying, we actually have an application for rezoning, it's, you know, in June, the application goes in February, it will be approved in, you know, X, Y and Z. We've had projects funded in that way. So I, I'm not particularly concerned about the ask that we have laid out because we otherwise comply in, in more than the things that are typically being concerned about, so building height, residential uses, parking, those are the things that are really key, things that are contemplated within the code that are the process we can lay out, that is acceptable to CHAF. And there might be questions related to it, but we laid out in that letter, which will come from the town staff that, that confirms that we've had those conversations and what the process is. And I don't know, Bob, you want to add any more to that or stay?
Yeah, I just don't know what the technical mechanism is for us to grant that to ourselves.
That would be involved in it. Ground floor residential is a conditional use in the HCC zone. And the first 25 feet is required to be commercial. The section that requires that 5.7 is one of the sections of the code that's subject to alternative compliance. So we would ask for an alternative compliance on the first 25 feet and a conditional use on the remainder of the space on the ground floor for residential.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure we had a really clear, like that that wasn't good.
I don't think it's fatally flawed. Jared will be the ultimate abider of that, but I don't think.
And then just a couple of comments, Heather, I appreciate the, the first looks at some of the landscaping. I, I would just comment that the idea of, are, are you talking about reducing the total sidewalk width when you're talking about reclaiming some concrete? And I, I would say it's going to take a lot to convince me that that's a good idea.
So the walkable width remains the same. It's kind of what would normally be a planting strip right now is also paved. So everything from back of curb to what would be front of building right now is paved with just trees or in tree grates. So that, you know, you keep pretty much the whole walkable surface of the sidewalk, but we've got this five-foot strip that we can then kind of reclaim some of that and remove that concrete like you'd see in that image where there's a walkway and to the left is a planting strip. Because that's really the only place where if we can reclaim that and give these trees that are there, it's as if they're growing in containers, you know, right now we, we use growth inhibitors and things like that on our street trees because you're trying to not let them, you know, get root-bound. So to pull that away, we, there's this opportunity, we may see those grow up even more, but only if you can kind of give them more root. So, you know, you're keeping the same walkway, walkway width.
Yeah, I just.
Because it's still a very public street and so.
That's what I want to be careful about is that we don't start to narrow that down and sort of pinch the, the passage from Main Street back to Colorado and the rec center and it's a pretty big thoroughfare. And it is zoned HCC, we are doing alternative compliance, but I don't think we have to make it feel as residential as a suburban street.
No, it wouldn't be like a residential street.
So, okay.
I think we still have eight feet on the sidewalks.
And then the other thing that I thought of as you, as you talked about all the great plannings and all these little things all over the place is just maintenance. And I'm sure, you know, Art Space will be managing this, but just being mindful of that and I'm sure you are.
And reclaiming the streetscape, the street state would be to the town, you know, to a certain extent and other portions to Art Space, so absolutely.
Okay, I'm watching our time and we've only got about 10 minutes left total here. So let's open it up to the public, if anybody from the public would like to comment on this, that this is not an approval of a development tonight. It's, uh, we're trying to get to a point where we're ready to submit this for financing and then we'll come back and go through the whole approval process. But if you'd like to comment on any of this, you know, it's a great time, you can just approach the mic, thanks. Introduce yourself, please, really clearly.
I got a question because I think snow removal is something that gets overlooked on projects like this. And being a guy that worked in the alleys a lot, I didn't know if you had any mitigation you'd propose to handle some of your snow because I think your alleyway north and south is going to be a big collector of snow. I mean, it's not snowing a lot yet this year, but I've predicted a big snow, we'll see what happens. I'm not the almanac, but. Anyway, I just wondered, you know, as far as streets, sidewalks and that, what you propose to do because I see a lot of problems with ice developing. Parking gets limited because snow gets dumped. And I know the city picks a lot up in the streets and stuff and they do a good job, but they might not get it to it in time and you're going to have a big ice dam out there in places. And, and the alley is critical because your north-south dumps into the alley there and then over toward the City Hall and everything there. So I didn't know if you had any mitigation you'd proposed or what.
So as far as mitigation, we, I, I don't think we've discussed any sort of like systems or melt or things like that, but it is an expectation of our, our management of the, and during the operations of the project that we have local folks who are engaged and under contract to come and remove the snow from all the areas that are part of the project development. So that includes parking areas, sidewalks. I guess I'm, I'm assuming that the, the town sidewalks are maintained by the town, but if not, you know, I guess that'd be something we would take on, but we'd have people who are local coming through as part of the management, either staff or supplemented with contractors to, to remove all the snow, make sure all the spaces are usable. Don't have a, you know, a developed plan around that, but it is an expectation, it's a budgeted cost for snow removal.
And I think his comment was about, is, is it a consideration in your design? Are you just thinking through snow storage and, you know, buildup and stuff like that?
Yeah, and that's. Yeah, and and that's where our our in the civil interface, just kind of getting caught up. Often what we're doing is some of the like bike parking. We're debating, is it covered, enclosed, secure? Or is that this open parking? Those are removed and then those often become the snow dump place. This reclaiming some landscape on the edge of Sixth Street, those are big for also snow collection. And so anywhere we're, we're kind of doing that trade-off, we're going to be able to pile the snow. So we we have to actually submit that plan as part of our land use.
Great.
Is our snow storage plan.
Other members of the public that'd like to comment on this application?
Kevin, one word. Um, I I think it's great. Um, you know, obviously housing is an issue we face here and I think that's uh gonna, looks like a beautiful use of kind of area that's not used. Um, I think that maybe uh just some minor comments be if we could just make sure that kind of each unit does have parking available to it. That just kind of makes sense. And then um, you know, maybe it's not a consideration because it's called the art space, but if we could maybe dial back some of these, you know, community murals that are painted on the side of the building, I don't really think that they kind of fit in with like a lot of the downtown architecture aspect, but just one opinion and I'm here and the opportunity was there. So.
All right. Thanks, Kevin. So, um, yeah, go ahead if you want.
Just say, um, related to any of those, you know, depicted, you know, activated arts spaces. Um, again, just underscoring is I think we did in the presentation. Those are just for examples, you know, the art is not picked out. And when we do have projects uh where we have opportunities for murals or for sculpture or for hardscape, we we uh typically approach that as not us coming and saying, here's what it's going to be, but presenting opportunities and letting the community both at large, as well as the residents who actually live in these units, to be a be a big voice and a driver of what that is, who the artists are, how that gets activated and, you know, take that driving force. So it's not going to be something we're going to say it has to be this, but allow those voices. And frankly, if that means folks don't want, you know, a big mural outside their window and that doesn't come to be, that's fine, because, you know, it, that's applying paint or not. Um, in those sort of instances. So it's not something we we want to drive, you know, coming in with an outside view, but saying here are opportunities and as as folks in this community, as residents, want to engage. You know, they can take a lot of lead on that.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else like to comment on this before we close the public hearing? Is there anybody online who would like to comment? So raise your Zoom hand. Nope. Okay. Um, then we'll close the public hearing and bring you back to the board. Um, like I said, the the key thing for tonight is to make a motion to can, to authorize submission of the tax credit financing application to Jaffa. Um, so whenever we're ready to make that motion, we can do that and then we can hear about the promenade.
I I'd move to authorize the art space team to submit a tax credit financing application to Jaffa before the February one, twenty twenty-four deadline, based on the design work to date.
Second.
All right, motion by Colin, second by Lonnie. Any questions before we vote? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Great.
Thank you.
Got that part done. That was the main goal. Um, now we only have six minutes left to hear about the most exciting part of the project, which is the 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 promenade. Um.
I thought we had till seven thirty.
Uh, we have till seven twenty and we started ten minutes early.
Before we do that, I do want to, I do want to take a quick moment to thank Aaron, because he's put in a lot of work on this project and Lila, who's also joining us via Zoom. Uh, it's been quite the effort and uh and Elise Wolf uh from Connect One Side. And of course, uh Andy Corber, who really helped us a lot with uh the front end and all the community outreach. So, and let you go from there.
So now you cheer for our application. Okay, yes, the fun part. So the promenade, all right, a quick preface again. This is the very beginning of this discussion about the promenade. Because now we're not just talking about even what's right up against the building for the Lytec application or even its temporary improvements. It really is thinking about the promenade in the town center, the promenade beyond, like, like, what do we really mean? Um, and a side note, I may hang out with the wrong people, but like sixty percent of them have no idea what the promenade means when I say that, which I have found fascinating. Like, really, we we just take it for granted. And so I think that that's been really interesting. Are we actually going to start to put it out there somehow that it's really celebrated as the promenade? Go to our next slide. These, I'll do these very quickly. Many of you saw these. So this is a culmination of all of the images that got the the most votes um in the charrette. So when we did our imagery and a lot of them were of the promenade, these, these were some of our highest votes. A few uh sketches, right, as we were doing the sketching part. It wasn't just about the buildings and uses and heights. You know, it was also just thinking about the promenade, which is how we came to focusing the commercial there and all of those things. But there were other things like what could happen over the top of the promenade, um, where might we do trellises, just all kinds of interesting things. So let's distill that for a minute. From those images, from the sketches that we saw, what were our takeaways as a group? There was this aspect of homemade, a little bit of DIY, but mostly it was just screamed personality. Most of the images people loved screamed personality of the place. You weren't going to find that thing anywhere USA, anywhere world. Um, colorful, so there was a lot of color and interest in many of the images people really loved, as well as the sketching. This idea of flexible, ephemeral, changeable, it was seasonal, it was, maybe it's this for two years and this for another year. So that was really important. The next two, this canopy and what we call expansion and contraction. So this is the idea that as you enjoy spaces, part of what happens to you in the public realm is you might kind of enter a space where things come a little closer, that it might be trees, it might be something over your head, this canopy, and then boom, it opens up. And there's like a, it's like yoga, like the breathe in, the breathe out, and all of a sudden you go, oh, and you breathe out. So that was really important. You saw that in the images. We're trying to bring that into the design. You heard twenty-four-seven all sees sun shade, right? Our, I mean, who knows? In the middle of summer, it's beautiful here, but man, it's blazing. So how do you bring shade? Does, is the shade there all the time? Can you remove it? All those things are things that we want to compliment, uh contemplate. Congregation, by far, that's what people want the promenade to be and do is congregate from inside the building to outside, from I'm just walking along, I don't actually care about the buildings, whatever's happening. Like, I want to be able to stop and do things sometimes. And we still need it to like convey people. So that's important. And then our vibe, I don't even know, people were all over the place. I want it to be historical. I want it to represent, you know, human interaction from first settlement to now. I want it to be future-proofed. I want it to, right now, Carbondale's free. No, we need it to be rooted. So who knows? But it has to have a vibe. It can't be anywhere. It's got to be Carbondale. Here's some of the complicated part. This slide is a lot more about process. So um in the top image, the highlighted green is is um uh town center. Right? What's happening at Thunder River? The blue is is really the promenade, right? It doesn't just start and end at town center. So while we have these discussions, I think we want to think about the promenade. Is it something that is important enough that maybe some of precedent that we do here, we want to start to think about how it could come into place? How it could create kind of some guidelines for what might happen in other areas if the next section develops between town center and Main Street, just things like that. So for us, we'd be remiss if we didn't say promenade is more than just this and put blinders on. You heard the discussion earlier, below on the bottom left is this idea that the promenade within town center um has to be approached carefully. So we have to do something here. Part of it is going to be permanent, part of it's going to be temporary. Building across the way might tear it up. The same thing as you do the buildings, you know, on the north of Thunder River, et cetera. So just really thinking about this sequencing of the promenade, it'd be nice to say, boom, we put it in, it's amazing and it opens. And it's not going to be that simple. So in in our memo, we described this idea of of um kind of the skeleton and then muscle and skin and then clothes. The skeleton are the things you've really got to do. You you got to think about it now. You want to put them in only once. You're never going to dig them up. Utilities, things underground, you know, running your irrigation line, trees that you're going to put in. You want to put those in and they're going to stay. And then you can do the next layer of thing, the next layer of thing. So as we continue this discussion, we really want to continue to think about that as part of this design process. Quick sketch again culminating from the charrette. This idea of where canopy could happen, where things could come in a little bit over your head, where it wants to open up. So this is three-dimensional. This is things that come to you as walls and then they open. These are things over your head. This is also east-west. Um, foregone conclusion in a way from the charrette was to open up this space across from Thunder River, both to celebrate its location here as well as to create relief along the promenade without just buildings the whole way. Okay, so we'll get into the promenade a little bit. This image really focuses on what we're thinking about doing, right, as a part of this particular, quote, call it quote-unquote phase one project. But then it does uh burst at the edges a little bit, which is part of what the town and some of the other stakeholders want to start thinking about. So for example, um, we'll kind of focus on what's happening right around the building first. Ramsey alluded to this very quickly. Uh, we've really been studying the grading. Um, never taking certain things for granted, but they were talking about staggering our floor plate on the ground floor. We'd really like to look at what that means to not have to do that. So we've been studying different grading examples, et cetera. And, you know, regardless, we have this notion in the upper right of what's going to have to happen at a certain point, where we're going to have these disappearing stairs. Is it one? Is it three? How does that relate to how we're going to kind of grade that first floor out onto the promenade? But those kind of details can create really dynamic places, like little interfaces, edges. We love edges as landscape architects. So those really can be incorporated and celebrated and perhaps be of great benefit to create a single floor plate, less expensive construction, you know, better interior, commercial space, et cetera. So that's kind of the higher ceilings, thirteen feet the whole way, you know, things like that. So it may be that that's possible in this corner up against the alley where we kind of are able to graduate down into this space and then disappear those steps. Um, so that's kind of one of our first images. We're talking about also this canopy. So there's always been this idea of bringing some of that lighting in, maybe some of it is trellising, maybe some of it is this idea of um uh, you know, just how to grow things on a little bit of canopy, that kind of thing. So right now, what we're looking at, working with the architects to to affix that to the buildings, on the buildings we know that are going to go in and do, then just do kind of a temporary polling on the other side where we can hang the lights for now. Again, they can come down when next building goes under construction. How we fit some of these things into the budget, we know we've got got-tos right up against the building and hope-for in that temporary space. Poles, lighting, some of those are going to be, that'd be really nice. And we'll see where the budget lands for, say, the Lytec. The other is to really think about how to integrate um more fixed planting areas, et cetera. And then the bottom middle, so we, both of those images, the flags and the and the picnic tables, we really want to bring that that um Carbondale personality that can't be anywhere USA. One of the things we were playing around with was how to invite organizations. So our nonprofits, our orga, arts organization, our schools, if you think about our circulator bus and our trash cans, like of all things. So inviting people to adopt a picnic table, essentially paint their own, design their own flags, you know, things that can move in and out. And right now are this very low-cost intervention that give it huge personality, but can be temporary. So when we have this whole strip where we've got to do things and they need to be able to come out when other areas go under construction. Um, so that's our picnic table idea right now. And then again, this goes to the bottom right too. The idea that we do want to bring the greenscape, the soft scape into the promenade. So thinking about the bottom right is that dairy block. How do you take really cool materials, um easy, durable materials, bring those in and right up against our building now in a more permanent fixed fashion, get some of these trees growing, maybe some of them integrate sculpture with plant material, et cetera. Um, so that's been really fun. And how to, you can see where it's up against the building. You know, making sure that we're integrating those twenty-eight foot.
Twenty, twenty-six.
Twenty-six foot sections, right? And where those are broken are places where the landscape can kind of move out as well. Um, the idea of scaffolding, so we're still playing with this with the architects, where might a more permanent, and really is a scaffolding. The idea that then it can, art installations can happen on that. Maybe it's up for a while, maybe it's down. Again, just thinking about how this is not this permanent fixed space, we're going to put pavers in and it's never going to change. So that idea of scaffolding has been another fun one. Um, I I want to make sure we talk a little bit about like what's outside. So we've had a lot of dialogue as part of the team of, is there something that some of our stakeholders want to start to think about and move forward sooner than later? Um, you know, grading out the open space across from Thunder River, maybe we're trying to get the grass growing and irrigation into that and a couple of big trees going sooner than later. But I think that's outside of Lytec and is going to require like the vision here to say, what would that really look like? Who do we need at the table? How do we make that happen? How do we find the budget, that sort of thing? So again, not part of Lytec, but I think something as we think about the promenade in a bigger way, is it important, first of all? Should we be thinking about that? And then what steps do we want to take to get us there sooner than later? And, you know, it was the same here with, do we do some of the scaffolding on the vacant area that's soon, you know, might soon to be Thunder River's expansion, et cetera. So um, yeah, those are all of our first brainstorming. There's a lot with the promenade, certainly, and a and a lot where, again, this is just scratching the surface.
Thanks, Heather. Um, are there specific things you'd like feedback on to kind of drive your next steps? It sounds like one of the big things is, do we want you to think outside of just this zone for the promenade north and south of there?
Yeah, certainly. Um, first, just kind of gut reaction to, you know, uh, some of the visuals is great. But I think the process is important because we also, i- if we want to talk about what it looks like to say, yes, there's a promenade design process. I think this is also one of the places where the public is going to want to have a lot of say and input and thought and incorporation and listening. Um, again, tagging off of the charrette, let's say. And so that idea of having that discussion, I think, is probably the most important. Is there a process that's a little bit bigger than Lytec piece? That we want to make sure might have its own path? Or do we kind of let it settle for a little bit, focus on Lytec? You know, and 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 go from there in a little bit more baby steps.
Thoughts from the board?
Yeah. My impression of this, and I'm I'm very impressed with this, but this hit me as being kind of a flexible, internationally inclusive um area. Because what I see in your uh representations here are a little bit of Dia de los Muertos. I see a little Machu Picchu. I see a little San Francisco and I see a little France. So what's wrong with that? I mean, that can only be found in Carbondale, right?
Pretty much.
So that that's my.
And some DIY picnic tables. So, yeah.
Yeah, I I can't contribute to that. I I know how to fish.
I mean, any thoughts on the like, it sounds like one option is just move forward with the Lytec project. Think about that one little section of the promenade for now. We've got pretty strong um schematics and renderings here for for that section, right? That little bit. Um, and let it evolve more slowly out from there. Or do we want to start some process that's looking at it? Um, you know, there's the the south area that connects with Main Street. There's the north area that connects with the Rio Grande Trail, um, as well as the rest of this um parcel. Any thoughts on those alternatives?
I would say to focus on the Lytec part. And then I love the concepts and the ideas around this, but I think about um, the cost involved in this. And it's be practical. And if there's a way to actually bring somebody else in that can actually help fund it um, and can invest in that, thinking to like something like, you know, like the Waltons did in Bentonville, like, you know, like saying, hey, here's somebody who is interested in having their, not so much, you know, name, but just, you know, mark on this, right? And so I think that's maybe a good way to approach it that lets us focus on this part first, Lytec, and then come back to this. So, but that's just an idea.
Other thoughts, Chris?
I I think you're in, going in the right direction. I think trying to just sketch out maybe in the the vague terms where you're. vision is going is a nice idea, but we don't necessarily have to get too prescriptive. Um, as as Luis mentioned, a couple of issues there. Um, and yeah, I think the only thing I might, if we're just going to focus on that one little section. I I I wonder if we want to think about those second and third stories with bringing that white metal around from the other sides of the buildings. And I know that kind of unifies the feel with the rest of the residential project. But those are sort of, those sort of stand out to me as maybe the most bland part of this, of these visuals. And I don't know how, I think I leave it up to you to think about that, but um, I do feel like if we do, if we were going to have an art budget around this, I would love obviously for a certain amount of it to be concentrated around the promenade. Um, even if that means maybe we have to delay some things in the alley or whatever. Um. Uh, I just think those those white, um, those say those don't say funky or unique necessarily to me. I think they work pretty well in the in sort of the context on the other side of the on Sixth Street where you are trying to be a little bit more contextual. But here I think you don't want to be contextual. You want to be as wacky as you can be, I think, or not as wacky, but trying to, yeah, really trying to break out of the kind of architectural vocabulary that people I think have really gotten tired of, of of that is often often is just budgetarily driven, but um, does feel like kind of sterilized, sterile or and then in that, just in terms of the, I'm glad that you're thinking about the long, the whole length of the promenade, obviously thinking about how bikes move through the space. How do we design it so that people can slowly maybe be biking through the middle and not be in, you know, having conflicts with people. And I think have this way you've designed, you've already shown here with this sort of using pavement and stuff like that to try to create these eddies on either side. Um, because I do think in the long run, we really do want to try to think about this thing. I mean, my dream vision would be that this thing goes all the way from Main Street to the dog park. And you could go all, you could somehow even like ADA in the future get to the dog park via this thing and you would tie Silvers Park to the dog park and have sort of it be the the park, you know, connector between those two spaces and and that would be a pretty, and then the Rio Grande Trail as well. And you create this whole nexus where you're kind of creating the pedestrian green spine of the town in a certain sense. That's kind of the alternative, the altern- the eco version of Main Street. Yeah. And sorry, one last, um, and then I also like obviously greenery as much as possible. And yeah, figuring out ways to try to bring it vertical. And I I like this idea of scaffolding and are there ways that they can be involved that they're not creating maintenance issues for the buildings, but maybe they're set off far enough that they are, you know, more towers of of stuff that vines can grow on or something like that, that that bring it vertical and do try to soften the soften the impact of the buildings even up high, which you have further away from the buildings, you see that.
Okay, any other feedback for the team or questions at this point? Is there anything you need clarification on where we're telling you different things? Because that happens sometimes.
Yeah, so I I just wanted to add that a couple of thoughts on on this idea of of continuing the to think about the promenade. And some benefits there towards at least kind of continuing the conversation in this in this forum. Whether it, whether it's every meeting or it's every month, you know, while there is sort of like an off-ramp to sort of put a pause on the light tech while we're hopefully going to hear back from with positive news in a few months. I think there's a real benefit to continuing the conversation on the on the promenade. And and one, one reason is that's really going to sort of help to um, keep this project in the focus. As you know, we're not, we're we're not going to stop here. We are going to look for the continuation of the town center development. And it's going to, you're going to make, send a message to um, uh, the other building opportunities and people that might be interested in that, that the town is still interested moving forward. And sometimes just envisioning like what that pocket park is going to become is going to help describe to someone the town has an interest in sort of creating this for real. And uh, it might drive a commercial developer to want to, or whoever that might be. Um, that comes to come to fruition to take on that commercial space, to actually want it more and to actually see that the town is behind it. So I see it some, you know, even if it's not a huge investment, keep it on the agenda. Uh, as you go through these, roll through these next months as we're we're here a little less, right? Um, uh, I just think it's a huge benefit towards uh, the betterment of the project.
And that seems reasonable to me. I think Luis has a good point that, you know, and and I think that that's actually similar to what you're saying, that like you're starting to flush this out a little bit. Could attract positive attention, whether it's somebody who wants to fund kind of the public aspect of it or uh, invest in, you know, frontage against it. Um, so that I mean, I I don't, I I'm not hearing anybody say like, we don't want to do this or we're on the wrong track. Um, I I don't feel like we're really well equipped to tell you which part to focus on right now. So if you feel like it's best to keep it at the forefront and we keep talking about it every time that we have a discussion, we're totally open to that.
Um, I know we're we're pushing short on time, so I do just want to, you know, thank you all again for your your input and your continued support. And you know, to the next steps, I think it's worth just mentioning, you know, we're in this really big push. We're going to put the application in uh, to Java. And then, you know, that part kind of goes dark for a bit, you know, it's February, probably here by May, uh, good or bad. Um, and during, you know, the first part of this year, um, a large part of my work is going to be here in Carbondale, is engaging potential users for commercial space, identifying who some other, you know, users might be and what their needs might be. That really drive those other opportunity areas because they're needing to be first floor commercial there. Housing can go above anything, but we don't know who those users are or what their needs are. We don't want to build, we don't know how to design it. And we don't know who may they buy, who they might be. So we're doing some of that groundwork now and we're going to continue to get that um, information out there that, you know, we have, you know, images to look at and people envision that and maybe there's some buy-in. And try and advance that, you know, and get stakeholders in users and and allow us to advance some of the other pieces, which then plays into the totality of the promenade. You know, within, you know, town center, but then as Heather was saying, you know, it does extend farther than that. So I think it is part of our continuing conversation. Um, in the early and, you know, continuing through the end of this year. And you know, as it makes sense, we'll certainly, you know, happy to be, you know, back in front of the board as we share those conversations. So.
Okay, thank you for all that work and we're so excited to see every step of the process.
All right, thank you all.
Need to make a motion or something to?
We just did. At the break. Um, thanks for the reminder there. Um, all right, uh, we're a little bit behind, but let's uh, maybe we can tick off a couple of uh, things fairly quickly here. So next is ordinance number one. Which is the central self-storage, second extension for public and private improvements request. Looks like Jared has this one. We've talked about this before and I think this is just a formal motion.
Yeah, so um, at your guys' November twenty-eighth meeting, um, you approved in principle um, the extension to the central storage um, DIA. Um, these two documents before you ordinance number one and the second amendment to the DIA. Um, just formalize the extension for both the public and private improvements. I'm extending those to um, August tenth, twenty twenty-four. Which is what was requested by the um, property owner. So I'm happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
My only question was just, was there any follow-up conversation? You know, we expressed a desire to get that bike path, um, the trail there, uh, open as soon as possible. Um, because there, are we, we're extending it as long as they could possibly need, but is there an intent and a possibility of opening that particular segment earlier?
There there was an interest. I think they're trying to see um, how far they can get before springtime and then hopefully have that open by then, but that's something we can certainly circle with them and
Okay.
Um, re-express that interest.
Okay, yeah, I just want to keep hitting on that, that even if everything's not done, if we can get that gate removed and let people start to use that, uh, that'd be a major public benefit every, every day that it's open. Other questions, comments? Okay, um, doesn't look like the applicants here.
No, they aren't.
Public hearing, so I think we can just entertain a request to um, approve ordinance number one.
I'll move to approve ordinance number one, series of twenty twenty-four. And the second amendment to the DIA for the Eastwood self-storage facility.
Second.
Lonnie, second by Luis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks Jared. And the next one is resolution number three. Make sure I'm not skipping anything here. Um, is that right? Resolution number three, this is the Main Street annexation petition.
That's correct. We do have um, the applicants here. Um, so staff, uh, this past summer received a petition for annexation for a seventeen hundred square foot parcel at the end of Main Street. Um, so it's on the north side of Main Street, um, in the one hundred block and it's at the very eastern edge of town. Um, what's before you tonight is a resolution for um, substantial compliance. And so this resolution really kicks off the annexation and the land use application process. Um, what you're uh, essentially reviewing tonight is that the petition for annexation um, substantially complies with the Colorado devised statutes and the property um, could be eligible for annexation. Um, after which, um, the town will publish notice for our standard land use applications. Take the application for the historic preservation commission, the planning zoning commission. And then ultimately back to the Board of Trustees with a recommendation to act on both the annexation and the comprehensive land use file. Uh, what the ultimate request will include is annexation, um, rezoning, administrative site plan review, subdivision exemption, and a conditional use permit. I will note that the property is currently zoned rural in Garfield County. Um, and this, this property is located within the phase one potential annexation infill area. Um, outlined in the town's comprehensive plan. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions you all might have about this.
And then I don't know, are we going to hear from the applicant tonight?
I'd just like to introduce the property owners.
Okay.
So, uh, Rich Camp and his wife Catherine and Terrence McGuire are the people who bought. And uh, is everybody clear the house that we're talking about, the property? And uh, you may know Rich, he's a local landscape architect. And Terrence, those of you who ate at Johnny McGuire's will uh, remember him. And Terrence now uh, has a uh, a mobile food uh, business. So that's all we really wanted to do is just put a name and a face together.
Thank you. Um, and just to be clear that this is not an uh, application to approve the annexation, it's just to get the process started. That it meets the basic threshold for getting the process started. Mark, did you have some?
That's all I was going to just reiterate. For those who haven't done annexations recently, it's just an eligibility determination. The board has full discretion to approve or deny or approve with conditions in the future. This is just to open the door of the process.
The details later.
That's right.
Okay. Uh, Marty?
Yep, so is this next to the Clay Center?
Yes.
Okay.
First house when you come into the town from Catherine's store on the right.
House is already in, right? It's just part of the lot.
The house is in, there's a small parcel further east adjacent to it, yes, that is not within.
Okay, and just in my own mind, so is the idea to put a mobile food truck in that space? Okay, and is this going to serve the public, the catering business, is it going to help a third um, Clay Center with their benefits? I'm just trying to visualize. All of the above.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, the house is going to remain and we're uh, going to remodel that and that'll be dining room and bar and then food trucks outside without going back.
And we'll have a full presentation when when it comes around for the land use piece of it.
Yeah, so right now it's just a determination that it meets those basic criteria. It's contiguous with other parts of towns, um, that sort of thing. And it, you know, it is in our long-term plan to to annex these little islands um, in. Um, and so I think we don't generally give them the level of scrutiny, you know, that annexation was designed for, which is like you're doing some big expansion into rural territory or something like that. You're extending your infrastructure and you have to be really, really careful about that. These seem like little, little zones that were forgotten about as as things went through the process in the past. So um, I anticipate it'll be pretty straightforward. Um, it doesn't appear that this is a public hearing, correct?
It's not.
Okay.
It will be, it'll be noticed the next time we consider it.
Okay. Uh, and if there's no more questions, somebody can make a question.
Um, move to approve resolution number three, series of twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Motion by Chris, second by Colin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We look forward to the next steps in the process. Thanks for coming and introducing yourselves today.
Just made up all the time you needed.
Believe me, I'm looking at that. Um. Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Got it. Thank you. So next item on the agenda is the Special Event Task Force recommendations for special events and street closers for twenty twenty four. Parking Rec Director Eric Brenlinger is here to give us an overview. There's a lot in this packet, so we don't have to go through every one, but you can hit the highlights. And I know that there's people here with concerns about the rodeo in particular, and some of those were shared earlier. So, yeah, sure, so what's going on this year?
Sure, thanks. Yeah, we've had, we had two meetings of the Special Event Task Force. It's been in existence since two thousand thirteen, just as kind of a an opportunity to get the special event organizers together with neighbors, with anybody affected by by our special events in town. And sit down at a table, have a civil conversation, you know, about solution-based conversation about any issues that we had with last year's special event. That's kind of how we do our first meeting. We really look at last year's special events by case-by-case basis, location-by-location basis, kind of go through our calendar for the year before. And just make sure, because there's a lot of repeat events too. So it's a good opportunity to kind of look at those events that just happened. And then our second meeting is really looking at the future, at the next year, and any changes that we have in our paperwork for the special event organizers, which, you know, some things did change. It's gonna be state-collected sales tax, so we had to kind of inform those those event organizers as to what that meant for them and to point them in the right direction as far as how to talk to their vendors, what to give their vendors, where to send their vendors to to be able to conduct that state sales tax versus a town collected.
Correct.
We also, you know, did a review of our last year, we really upped our security requirements for our larger special events. And so we did a pretty good review of of how that worked with the with the public and with the special event organizers. And we we decided to stick with our ratios right now because we really saw some events that happened in the valley that were pretty scary to law enforcement and 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 the potential for, you know, what what that paid security is there to do, to hopefully stop and recognize, you know, somebody who's willing and intent is to do harm. And so we we have maintained our strong ratios that we we brought last year as far as security requirements for for different levels of special events. We allowed the volunteers for of nonprofits to be trained through a process to take the spot of of what some of those ratios laid out for a for a uniformed security guard. And that was twenty-five percent of what our our ratios, you know, laid out. And we're gonna maintain that. And and although it was a burden on some nonprofits to to pay for that that security to be there at their event, they also, I think, realized the importance of it too. And and with the twenty-five percent of of volunteers that can be trained to take the place of some of those paid and uniformed security guards for the for the bigger events, that twenty-five percent started to make some sense. You know, for the smaller events, it's really just, you know, one out of four, right? So and so when we have an event at the rec center, let's say, we we have a security company that we usually hire for that, that has their ratios figured out how to control that building and the and the outside of that building. And so that's one of those scenarios where if you have a volunteer that goes through the training, it's probably just gonna be one or four, one or five for that that scenario. But at the at the same time, that's a professional security company that says, here's how we can secure the building and the the outside space for your event. And so we we trust those numbers and and we we abide by them because, you know, they are, you know, lets us sleep at night, I guess is the best way to say that. So so those were a couple of the things that kind of were kind of figured out and carried over. We did provide you in your packet kind of our process, just so so you're educated in in what we ask special event organizers, you know, what kind of hoops they have to jump through, the paperwork they have to fill out. I did include all of that in your packet, so you could you could really see it and see kind of the process that somebody has to go through. And one of the one of the biggest things I like to share at this, you know, in this presentation is if somebody comes to me and says, hey, I want to do this big event, you know, in in town, and they have to kind of go first through the Special Event Task Force. So when they come to me and and present a big event that they would like to do, we're usually talking about the following year. We're not talking about in three months, I want to do this big event. And so that that gives us the time to educate them on what they would need to do. It also gives the Special Event Task Force and the public an opportunity to say, hey, do we want this or not? So I think the I think the process is is really working, working well. And and right now, you know, with our calendar, of our draft calendar that you're looking at, we have a hundred and three special event days on town property next year. So that's what we've been running about ninety to a hundred for the for many years, actually. So it's, I don't, I don't, it's not growing. It's it's more just main maintaining that level of vibrancy at that level. So one thing we can talk about tonight is, you know, kind of some of the issues and some of the opportunities for the neighbors to, you know, let us know what worked and what didn't. And one of our major things last year was the Carbondale Wild West Rodeo and and the changes that we enacted with the Wild West Rodeo to try to solve some of the issues out there of of parking and really kind of a overcrowding of the of the event space, right? So so we did go in that portion of your packet, just so you can understand the effort that was put forward to try to have a solution, solutions-based meetings with Garfield County Roden Bridge, Garfield County Sheriff's Department, us as the Town of Carbondale, the rodeo organizers, and 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 the neighbors. So we did have some meetings, come up, came up with some solutions, actually took those solutions to the rodeo and rodeo board, took those solutions also to the Garfield County Commissioners and had had them kind of approve of some new signage out there, some permanent no parking signs on County Road one hundred. And then some temporary signs on the three county roads out there surrounding the rodeo. And that those were no parking on one side of those county roads, allowing for emergency vehicles and and life safety issue to vehicles to come come through that property without having parking on both sides of those roads. So we we took that to the county, got that all approved. Unfortunately, there was no enforcement of of those rules. And so the public didn't pay any attention to any of those rules. And as far as the parking is considered. So we, I think, so that's our that's our issue now and and a solution that we need to kind of come up with. So what what I was recommending is you know, we we did, let me just kind of cover, just to make sure everybody's on the same page, cover what we did last year. So so the Town of Carbondale in Garfield County, which included enforcement of the approved parking rules. So we asked the the rodeo promoters to provide a free shuttle. They they were willing to do that. They I think that 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 worked. I think that a lot of people, you know, didn't know about it and and weren't forced into using it. Like if if there was enforcement of the parking, they'd be forced into using the shuttle, right? So so I think that 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 could be another solution. We we had a let me just read my notes here. So we, our solutions included, you know, off-site parking at the Orchard and Shuttle Service. And the rodeo ground started paid parking at the ground, so that should be an incentive either to carpool or to find alternate transportation. They did provide bike racks out there to encourage alternate modes of transportation. And they also yeah, had had where's that? They did have security out there too to to help with that. So so where are the solutions? This, where where do the solutions come from? And here's here's some of my ideas and and maybe something that we can discuss tonight. So that I think that some of the solutions are additional promotion of the free shuttle service, additional hired parking security officers, additional parking deterrence on County Road one hundred. If they, if we figure out a way where they can't park there physically, then they can't park there. I didn't, and so there there might need to be some 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 thought processes in in that, right? And then, you know, there is a, the the town and the town police department has has done a good job of enforcing the rules and laws within the rodeo grounds themselves. They don't have any jurisdiction outside of those rodeo grounds. And so there is a thought process that maybe during Thursday night rodeos or special events that happen out there that they have some jurisdiction over that that zone and are able to enforce some of those parking rules. We had a few, two Haripayo Rancheros, which are Mexican rodeos last year out there at the property. They had hired a security company that has a vehicle that has a light on it and has a logo on it. And they were successful at utilizing that vehicle. And when somebody started to park in those spots, we were able to pull up and say, hey, you can't park here. They were able to put all of their parking on site though. So that doesn't mean that that would work when there's not enough parking on site for the amount of cars that come out there. They were able to successfully put all of the cars that came to the event on the rodeo site and did not need to utilize those other parking zones. So so that was, that was, that might not be the solution for the Thursday night rodeo. So what we'd like to do is figure out some solutions to this problem and to, you know, go to the Garfield County elected officials during a work session. There's a couple of work sessions coming up. One of the work session that we would probably like to participate in with some of these ideas and solutions would be in February sixth. It's a nine AM Tuesday meeting. And then there's being a work session and no decisions could be made. But then there's a regular meeting February twentieth. So so that would be the timing of just trying to figure out some solutions to this this issue of parking and enforcement out at the rodeo grounds. So so that's, everything else was, as far as what we're looking for approval tonight is is kind of status quo, same kind of a street closures. We are looking at the, you know, closures for parades, closures for First Friday, closures for event space for like Potato Days. And and that's, yeah, otherwise, as far as, you know, approval of the special events, it's really just looking at the calendar and getting the green light to to move forward with with those special events into the future. So hopefully I gave enough detail in the in the memo that any other decisions that need to be made tonight, all the details are in that memo, so.
Great, thanks, Eric. I might just ask a couple clarifying questions. Thanks for that overview. So the Mexican rodeo only see one date on the calendar this year, is that correct?
They they were going to
There's like an either or, but it's one event.
Yeah, there are two, they had two dates. They were gonna have two dates in Rifle and two dates early on in the summer at at our facility. And so we have not nailed down the actual dates of those yet.
Okay.
So that's why it's either this day or this day, because those are the, those were the days that are available.
And I know there were a lot of neighbor concerns before those happened last year, but it sounds like they might have been in a way more successful than the than the Wild West Rodeo as far as mitigating their impacts on traffic and things like that. I mean, were there were there other issues that came up in the discussion this year or things we should be concerned about?
The, there was some, you know, decibel, you know, concerns about how loud Mexican rodeo is. A Mexican rodeo is is a concert. You know, Mexican rodeo is culturally, some bull riding and some dancing horses to the the live mariachi music. That that is a Mexican rodeo. It's a live band where people dance and and that is, that is what their rodeos look like. So so it, you know, it's, some of the neighbors were like, oh, it's a rodeo disguised as a concert. No, it's actually a Mexican rodeo, which is a concert. And 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 that has the bull riding and the and the dancing horses and, you know, some some neat stuff, some really amazing stuff to go experience, because it's very different than an Anglo rodeo. So it was really, really fun to go go see those. And 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 they were, they were well attended. You know, they they moved two of them, they had four scheduled last year on our original calendar. They moved two down to Rifle. You know, they could bring in what what they share with me, a lar- larger bands down there, bands with a bigger draw. They were trying to keep our events here kind of family-friendly, you know, not the big-name bands is gonna be the big draw. They did it on Sundays to be a a post-church kind of activity and a family activity. And and it worked, you know, they, that's how they billed it to us. And and for my, from my perspective, it really worked. We can see if the neighbors felt the same. But from my perspective, what they said they were gonna do, they did and and they controlled the parking. They controlled access, they controlled the alcohol, they controlled, you know, the the event. So they did a good job.
Both rodeo events, we heard from the neighbors of of the rodeo grounds that they weren't aware or included in the this Special Events Task Force process, because it's normally just people that live in town. But were we able to reach out to them and include them in this time?
Yes, yes, and many neighbors came and participated in in both meetings. And so so it was good, good civil discussion. And and they're, they're like us, they want to see some solutions to the issues, you know, they want to see some solutions to the problems there. And and some of them are life safety issues out there. When when people park on both sides of those county road, a a emergency vehicle would have a hard time getting through there. And and when people park on County Road one hundred, right next to the huge sign that says no parking here, that we actually started to put out there, you know, our message board, it it just didn't seem to matter. And then they go get to their car after the rodeo is over in the dark. I mean, it's very dangerous. So we know that.
Okay. Other questions, and we will hear from the public. Other questions or comments on the calendar, the events, the process going forward with the rodeo or any other events?
No, this is a huge calendar, as you always manage every year, so kudos to you for pulling that off. One thing that came to mind is when the sheepdog trials come. they're pretty successful for that particular event to recruit community members to help with parking. Is there an opportunity to do something similar here for the rodeos? Is there kind of a incentivized, something that we can do to encourage more community participation? Just to have eyes on, if nothing else, and direct traffic as best as they can? Would that help anything?
I, I think it's a capacity issue. Yeah, because they, they do rent the field adjacent to the, to the rodeo grounds. And do, you know, park people in there as, as best they can and do fill that space. You know, I, I just think it's a capacity issue. So the, the solution is that, is that there is no parking there. If you're showing up after seven o'clock and you have to take the shuttle to participate in the event. You know, I mean, I think that, that that's somehow got to get, get portrayed, you know, and, and, and there's physically no place to park out there, you know? I mean, that's, that's kind of my only, you know, solution, I think, that'll, that'll make this work. So that, so when that parking is full, you know, there's a way to say, sorry, parking's full. You have to go take the shuttle. And, and waited, get that to happen and, and a, and a public education that that is going to happen and be enforced.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Chris?
I just, I think at the, trying to get an MOU or something with Garfield County to let the police do a little bit of parking enforcement on Willow, Daisy and Rose. Sounds like a, what?
They won't do it.
They won't do it? Well, what is the, what is the goal of this work session then? Are we gonna go and ask again?
Do you want to answer that or do you want me to?
I mean, I, I think we need to make them aware that it is possible as, as the elected officials. That this could be done with, with the certain process. It's been shut down at the, at the sheriff's level. And, and so I think it's maybe worth reopening that.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like that's also maybe incumbent upon the neighbors as well to show that there's a huge, a large agitation around this issue and as well at that meeting. Because, yeah, we've been hearing a lot about it, but maybe it's not filtering as much up to them. But, and then I, I'll, just one other minor thing, just, I think, yeah, the incentive thing is also a good idea. And maybe there's even, I mean, I was just thinking like, maybe you get a, you take the shuttle, you get a raffle ticket or something. What do you, like, some sort of incentive to say, hey, it's fun to get on the bus or, or do this? And, and, and maybe it's a thing also during the event that stops and everyone knows that, oh, the people who got on the bus, I'll get out your raffle ticket and win something. And everyone else sees that there's a, you know, a positive reason to go to the church and not just, not just a slap on the wrist or whatever.
Marty? The problem is there isn't even a slap on the wrist. And the point of going to a county commissioners meeting, I would hope all the neighbors would come as well, is it's a political situation. And the media, the newspapers need to know that they're a bunch of unhappy people who want their elected officials to respond to their needs. We have tried to reach out. We've tried to do it. We've offered to patrol the area just for Thursday nights. We've been shut down. And we can't patrol them. I understand there's staffing issues. But apparently they don't have the staff to patrol them either. So are we gonna wait till someone, some individual gets hit by a car? Or an ambulance needs to come to someone on Daisy or one of the roads back there and they can't get through because of parking? This problem has existed. The rodeo association is trying to work to get this resolved within their limitations. We're neighbors. You know? This should not be an issue between Carbondale and the county. This should be something where we can work together to resolve this problem to everyone's benefit. And if putting a little political pressure on them is the only thing we're left with, then that's where we have to go.
Well, and I think it should be kind of all, all options on the table. Like, let's look at the, the problem and desired result is enforcement. And options are, you know, the county enforces it, which they've said they're not gonna do. They deputize our police, which they've said they're not gonna do. Maybe it is the private security. I, I don't think we know exactly what the solution is. But it, it does seem like an untenable situation to, to do again the way that we did it last year. Let's hear from others. If anybody'd like to speak, Bob shared some concerns with us about exactly this issue at the start of the meeting. If there's anything to add, you're welcome to add. And if Mr. Jervaz or anyone else would like to, to share, you're welcome to. Of course, just make sure you've got the mic and your name for the record, please.
Larry Jervaz again. So I'd like to bring up one other thing too about the rodeo grounds. But first comment would be, I totally agree with Marty. I think he has laid it out there the way it is, and it's a problem. The rodeo grounds, when they were used by the Mexican rodeo, the thing that made it mostly good was they were able to contain everything on the grounds. That really made a huge difference. So, but there was another problem there that they had rented the City of Carbondale soundstage or whatever you call it. I'm not sure of the exact word for it. But it has curtains on it and everything. We were out there discussing it with them. And the problem is behind McConant, we've got that ridge there that's about a thousand feet. And we all discussed that there was a lot of reflections coming. And if we turn the soundstage a little bit up east and angled it a little bit, it would help to reflect, not reflect as much sound into the neighbors. Well, they pretty much turned it right into the hill and they took the curtains and pulled them all back. So poor Rick Cheney was sitting there having plates vibrating on his table. So other than that, it was actually pretty good with them. The problem with the Wild West, there is some more parking, as I've talked to Eric, Eric's been pretty helpful in this, that if you guys would take the old outhouses out there and clean it up and get that pile of chips out of there and there's some old metal. I haul some stuff off with the permission of the city down to a recycle place just to get it off the property because I'm obsessive compulsive and I thought it was unsightly. So I took a whole load down there and there's still more stuff there. And I just think that if you would remove some of that, there might be another 20 parking places along that fence, which would be a little more revenue for whoever. Doesn't really matter to me, but it's more about containment on the property. And the other thing which Bob mentioned too, is I've said too about changing the flow of the shuttle, I think would be a big thing to help out. If you, I think, and I don't think it matters which way. You come in off 100 Road and go out, you know, you come down Daisy there, Willow, whatever, come down Willow and, and turn and go out 100 Road. I think it increases the visibility of the shuttle. That's number one, because the shuttle's off over on Willow Lane there and it's in the dark and you don't really see it much. And I think the announcers need to announce it more and it takes time. That's one thing that Marty talked about and Eric's talked about. It takes time to get people to decide maybe it's a good thing to do it. It's pretty fast, doesn't take very long to make the circuit. And I think it would help a lot. So that's, I think, something to be considered. The other thing that bothers me that really hadn't been mentioned in front of you guys is that you've been dumping the snow on the property there for the last few years. And all of us out there on wells. And in Aspen, a number of years ago, they had to go to a heating system to help contain the trash. And you can't just dump it in the river anymore. Well, you're kind of dumping it in our wells out there. And your well field out here on Blue Heron probably gets some of that flow eventually. So you've got mag chloride and who knows what. And there's a ton of trash. So one thing that I and Eric had talked about is maybe you could take a, if nothing else, I mean, it'd be a help for a start, is take one of the membranes for the ice skating ring and maybe put it down ahead of time. I mean, the snow is just kind of getting started and maybe we won't get much and maybe we'll get a ton. But if you had something there to kind of collect that stuff when it melted off, that might help a little. It might not meet EPA because of the discharge there that's going into the groundwater. And it's all flowing west. So I think it's something you guys ought to consider. You really need to be, something that's somewhat impenetrable as a dumping area so that you can contain that stuff and then clean it up afterwards. I mean, the thing that we said with that membrane, at least you could pick it up after the stuff all melted and it'd kind of be like a, a big rug and you just pull it up and go take it to the dump. Or maybe you go dump it and recycle it. I don't know. But I think that's something that needs to be considered too about that impact on the neighbors there. So anyway, at one time I owned all those roads and I deeded them to the county. And it was for ingress and egress and for access of utilities. There was none of this rodeo stuff. So the thing with the, the Mexican rodeo is what we heard, there was going to be thousands of people coming there. So we were kind of overwhelmed and felt like that we were gonna just get trashed out out there. And trash has been a big problem, not only on our property, but going around the loop there. I found clothes. Last year, my dog picked up something and I grabbed it out of her mouth and it was a tampon that somebody had thrown in the borrow pit there. There was two tampons, one in the package and one that was not. And, I mean, that kind of irritates us, especially a guy like me that's obsessive compulsive. I don't like to see that garbage. And you know, if, if you guys consider yourself an environmentalist, the thing I think you got to learn to do is to bend over. That's how you pick stuff up. And I'm always bending over stuff at the post office as I walk my dogs around out there because I don't like the trash. And I hope you would do the same. And that could be a great facility and we all actually support the rodeo, but just not the way that it's impacting us. So thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it and hope I didn't offend anybody.
Thanks, Larry. Anybody else?
Add a couple of things to my earlier comments.
Sure, yeah. And I think we, I took notes on your earlier comments, so you don't have to repeat those. And, but anything additional that's come up?
Well, there's just, Larry mentioned when we heard about the Mexican rodeo, the neighborhood went, what? And I, and we saw internet marketing for the Mexican rodeo. There were five bands scheduled. I had this vision of a Mexican Woodstock outside of Carbondale. I mean, it was, what's going on, you know? What are we gonna have to endure? The rodeo has gotten bigger, the, the Carbondale Wild West rodeo, I don't think any of us had any problems really until the parking started expanding onto our local rural streets. And I think there's a fundamental problem that, you know, Eric said, the special events in the town. That's how the special events at the Gustarian Arena are thought of. But because it's not part of the town, there's a whole raft of special issues that have to be addressed. We didn't, we hadn't heard anything about the Mexican rodeo until it was already scheduled and happening. You know, we weren't, we weren't included. We weren't reached out to.
But this year you were, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So that's, let's talk about this.
Yeah, I've been, having had discussions with a lot of people, including county commissioners and sheriff's representatives at Carbondale. You were there. And it's, it's, it is a political problem. I, I called Lou Valario a year and a half ago when this, when the parking started expanding down Willow Lane and down Daisy Drive. And we were just getting chock a block full of stuff. And he basically said, I don't want to do anything because of liability. Well, there's a hell of a lot of liability that accrues to somebody getting hurt because the parking regulations aren't being enforced. They did pass the parking regulations, so now they can legitimately ticket people, but you don't have the manpower. When on Thursday nights, apparently, I was told, they have three deputies on duty. One in eastern Garfield County, which is us, one in northern Garfield County, and which is one in western Garfield County. What kind of response time are we getting? It's, it's just, it's, it's crazy. The enforcement thing needs to be addressed. And I envision the rodeo just getting bigger and bigger every year because that seems to be the pattern of everything in this valley. And there are going to be more special events. And the town of Carbondale is going to be asked to provide the, the venue. And I think, you know, the neighbors definitely are involved now. But you also have to remember that it's not part of the town of Carbondale. And because it's a government owned thing, there's no noise ordinances that apply. So everything has to be really thought through because of the political issue. And how we address that and how, you know, if, if we can't get Garfield County to do something, you know, collaboratively, then we're gonna have to do it something as antagonists. And we don't want to do that. I don't know how much that costs. Everybody. But I think there's some real liability issues for both governments. If there is something that untowered, that, that were to happen out there and there, because of the response time, you know, it got worse.
Great. Thanks, Bob.
So, thank you.
So clearly more discussions need to happen about the rodeo. And, and that's gonna happen. Did you want to share a thought?
Just figured I'd add, so I'm Kevin Woodward again, just a perspective as someone that's not a neighbor, just likes to frequent the rodeo and wasn't really aware of the, the shuttle until about halfway through. I think it's just really builds on kind of what Chris was saying about some type of fun incentivization or, or even just monetary, you know? If, if we can talk to the rodeo people about, you know, saying if you're gonna park here on premises, it's gonna be $20 a ticket. But if you get on the, the rodeo, everybody gets a $5 voucher, something that doesn't cut into their bottom line. So they're artificially, you know, raising the price or just building upon what, what Chris says as just a casual goer. And I think we all like the, the rodeo and want to see it continue to do well. But that's the type of stuff that's really gonna move the needle, I think, so.
Great. Thank you, Kevin. Yeah, I, I don't expect that we're gonna solve this problem tonight, but we need to approve the calendar. And it sounds like there needs to be follow up discussions with the, the county commission involving the neighbors, that sort of thing. And so it sounds like staff has a plan to, to move forward with that. And we'll hear how it goes. And you can let us know if it would help to have one of us as elected members of this board there to talk to elected members of that board. I'm sure we'd be willing to do that. Anything else on the calendar?
Is there a way to, or is it even legal to block off Blue Heron, Rose and Willow at all? You know, just put some blockades in front so that people can't go down those side streets? Is that a possibility or is that considered unlawful?
I mean, you could have, you know, emergency vehicle access only, you know, type one barricades and type three barricades that could be easily moved. You know, I, I, you know, so that, you know, maybe that is one of the solutions we, we talk about. The, the, the issue on County Road 100 though is actually the super dangerous scenario, you know? But some thought processes we had when we had meetings was to bring in Jersey barriers, you know, and actually make it physically impossible to park there. But that's a lot of Jersey barriers. So, so that was kind of dropped just on the logistics side.
Not to mention ugly.
Yeah.
Have they tried any kind of barriers there or no?
They did put Jersey barriers on, on the, the turn ins there. So, so because we had a few rodeos where, where parking was, you know, on the corners too, actually choking down that entry point, even if there were cars parked on one side of Willow or Rose or Daisy. Didn't matter because, you know, that was, the entrance was choked down.
But if the state, I, I mean, driving down that road, the safety issue I found was people parking on the south side of County Road 100 where there's basically no, almost no shoulder.
Yeah.
I mean, barriers could be put there to discourage parking. Maybe that's something to think, talk to county about.
Yeah, it sounds like there's gonna be more meetings. So I just, I want to move us on if I can. Because we're, I, I don't expect that we're gonna get in. I, I don't expect that we're going to get into the level of detail of solving this tonight. That's, that's not our task. It's to approve the, the calendar. And support staff going forward with these discussions. We've got six months till the first rodeo. Um, we do have some time. Um, so with that, if there's no other questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the calendar. That's what we need, right?
Yep.
I'm looking for it.
Uh, it's. Uh. It's on the second per, the last page of the first document in the packet.
I'll move to approve the twenty twenty four special events and street closures as recommended by the special events task force.
My microphone wasn't on. One more time. Um, I'll move to approve the twenty twenty four special events and street closures as recommended by the special events task force.
Second. Motion by Lonnie, second by Chris. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously.
Abstained.
Oh, sorry. Alright, Luis abstained because of Five Point Film Festival, I assume. So that was five yeses, one abstention and one absence. Alright, thank you for coming and, and sharing those concerns. As we said, we'll, we'll keep, keep talking about it and it, and it is ultimately a.
Where you are collectively, the more political pressure we can. Put on a county commissioner because it's just. Who are you going to call? You call the sheriff on a. There've been some, there have been some near physical incidents. Because we were trying to, when they put the parking signs up, we tried to tell people to park only on one side of the street. And there were definitely conflicts that were caused locally by my wife. Talking to somebody.
Okay, thank you.
Another.
Alright, we got a couple of other items that, that we've got to move on to. Eric, did you get what you needed from us?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, thanks Larry, thanks Bob for being here and sharing your thoughts.
Thank you for coming, guys.
Um, next one is a direction on yard waste drop site collection.
So this is a, this is a Kevin item, but Kevin is not here. Um, and it's. Pretty simple one. Um. The, two years ago, um. We went out for, with request for proposals for yard waste. And entered into an agreement with Evergreen Zero Waste. Um, their. Um. Agreement was to provide service in twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three. Section twelve allows for the option to renew that agreement. For two consecutive, two-year terms upon mutual agreement. Um. They've indicated a desire to renew the existing agreement. Um. We just want to know if the board is, uh. Happy with that renewal or whether they want us to go out for another RFP, both Kevin and myself. Um, enthusiastically support renewing the contract with Evergreen. Um. Poor Dave, he's, he's been online for a long time. I don't know if he wants to say anything. Um. But, uh. You can talk, Dave, you're, you're muted right now, but, um. But the contract seems to be working. Pretty well. They have some, um, increases in their pricing that are built into the contract. I don't think that there's, we went back and forth with some conversations about what the options were. And I think that. Uh, where they settled was that they are just looking to renew with the price increases that were called for in the original contract.
Okay, so it looks like there's not an approval before us, but it's that there's direction to either. Uh, bring, for staff to bring back. An amendment to the agreement that allows for extension. Um. Or do we want to go through another RFP process? Does anybody see a reason to go through an RFP process?
No.
Doesn't sound like it. Um, Dave, you're welcome to speak up if you want to, but it doesn't sound like we are inclined to do an RFP, so we're probably about to direct staff to. Uh, bring back an extension. It's okay, he might be just listening in.
I'll just say that I think it's been super successful and I like that it's been expanded to more of a regular thing that people can sort of account on. Knowing it's there and. Um. I was out there one day and had a great interaction with, he was out there helping people sort their stuff and so. Service was good too.
Okay, done deal.
Okay.
Okay, next.
So it sounds like we're going to direct staff to bring back an extension.
That sounds great.
Okay, thanks. Alright, uh, last item on the agenda is the newcomer response update, um, and we do have a memo on this.
Okay, we did.
Lot of activity.
I gave you, um. A fairly dense memo. Um, but I will sort of recap the, the main points on this. Um, we are opening two new shelter sites. One is the back half of this room for up to twenty people. The other one, um, we now have an agreement, although it hasn't been fully inked yet. Um, for a facility use agreement for the downstairs of the Methodist Church on Second Street. For. We wrote it up as twenty to twenty-five people. We plan to put twenty. Um, regular shelter residents in there, but we've also. Um. Designated that as a family friendly shelter. Um, families don't stay in the shelter for more than a couple of days. They get almost immediate services, but sometimes they need a night or two in a shelter. And, um, there is some space in that shelter that can be divided off from the rest of the room. So that's why we chose to do that. This shelter will be, um. Uh, prioritize, will prioritize, um. Shelter residents with vehicles as ninety-nine percent of them are unregistered and uninsured. And we have designated the parking lot across the street. Um, we do not want unregistered. Vehicles parking either on the property of the Methodist Church or on the streets anywhere around there. Um, once we, and I'll talk about the timing of this in a minute. Once we, um. Get people moved and they'll probably be moved in two different shifts. I anticipate that this room will open a few days before the Methodist Church room. Um, we still have a couple of things to do over there, changing a doorknob and fixing a light and a couple, a couple of other safety things. Um. The cars that are parked behind the Third Street Center will be moved at the same time. As this shelter gets opened. Um, we will. Have some volunteers escort that, those cars. To the parking lot behind the Thunder River Theater so they know exactly where to go. They will not be parked behind this building. They will not be parked across the street in the public parking lot. Um. That behind the Thunder River Theater will be considered a safe zone. If people end up sleeping in cars or if they are, have a car that is not, um. Registered, doesn't have plates, what have you. That's the only place that it's going to be safe from ticketing or, um, towing. We'll give it a couple of days grace period and then the camping ban will go back into effect in Carbondale. Um. I anticipate, it's really all about staffing and we're working on that as fast as humanly possible. Um, we do have a new. Temporary employee who will probably be a town employee for a couple of weeks. He will end up being a recovery resources employee and he is going to be the shelter operations manager. Um, if he can handle it. We will probably open this room at the end of this week. Um, and then the Methodist Church Tuesday or Wednesday of next week. If we don't have the staffing, then we'll open them both up Tuesday and Wednesday of next week. Um. So what's happening is we started out with sixty people at the Third Street Center, up to sixty people. And that total has gone up and down as, you know, depending on what's been going on over there. Um. We won't have this third, this third street center anymore, so we will be decreasing our capacity. Down to about forty regular, um, shelter residents. Um. Let's see, we are currently working on shelter rules. Uh, additional wifi for the Methodist Church. Making sure that we have enough trash receptacles, porta potties, servicing, what have you. We don't need the porta potties over here, but we definitely do over at the Methodist Church. We also have, um. Two, if you've noticed, two porta potties set in the parking lot across the street. Um. We like the fact that the police will have easy eyes on to that parking lot. That it's close to where showers have been, um, and are continuing to be utilized. Um. We've also. Part of the rules are going to be no eating in the shelters, so the, um. We have dinner service, uh, at the elementary school Monday through Friday. That started yesterday. Um. We're playing around with how many numbers we're going to need to serve, but, um. As of last night, there were thirty-two people who were fed on-site at the elementary school. Um, couple of other statistics, um. As of last Thursday. Um, there have been five hundred and ninety-eight showers taken by the newcomers group at the rec center. Um. So it's forty-two days. Every day is different, um, but on average it's about fourteen a day. Um, we are also contracting with additional custodial staff. We're really, particularly with this room, we are locking it off. From the rest of the building. And so we do not want our current custodial staff, especially if it's just Rosa and she's by herself. Coming over here and trying to vacuum this room while people are trying to sleep over there. Sometimes she doesn't get here till the middle of the night. So we'll have day cleaning over on this side and night cleaning over on the other side. Um, different company. Um, but it's the same company that cleans the rec center. Um. Uh. I would like a little bit of guidance from the board. Um. You know, when we first started even having these conversations and the board decided what they were willing to do and whether we were. Going to work on sheltering people. We talked about three things. One was life safety, keeping people, we don't want anybody freezing to death on our watch under a bridge or anywhere else. Um, second one was just treating people with dignity and respect. And the third one was. Um, getting as many referrals to other agencies, nonprofits, et cetera. Um, as we could with the capacity that we had. Um. What's been happening at the Third Street Center is that volunteers, for the most part volunteers, whether they are nonprofits, faith. Organizations, uh, individuals, businesses, what have you, have been going to the Third Street Center and serving dinner. Um. Every night and, um, bringing breakfast, uh, seven days a week. Um. With these other two shelters. Now that we have people that aren't all in one place. First of all, we. I wanted to have a central meal site. Um, that works for the elementary school in the evenings, but it does not work for the elementary school in the mornings. Um. We are talking to the faith communities, particularly the orchard, to see if that could be. No matter who provides the food, a place for people to be warm and, and eat. Um. The conversation, we've had the conversation, Rob Stein, myself. Um, and Brooke Kuhn, who has been managing, brand new managing our, um. Volunteer response and trying to pick up some of the pieces that Voces was doing before. Um, we've been talking about breakfast. And, um. If we have volunteers, we don't want people eating in the shelters. The question is, where's the meal site and how do we manage the volunteers? And how do we control how much food and what have you, um, particularly for two distinct groups of people. Who are staying in two different places and potentially other people who aren't sheltered. But. Um, want to eat. Um. One of the things that came up was the opportunity, and there are two opportunities to hire a vendor. To make kind of grab and go breakfast, whether it's like an Egg McMuffin or whether it's a breakfast burrito or what have you. Um. In thinking about that, and that was suggested to me, but I have some hesitation. Um. Primarily because I'm trying to figure out where the limits of. The board's goals and priorities. With regard to this population are and how to. Go from, we'll provide you with coats and hats and boots and. Shelter and food, two meals a day and what have you, to March thirty-first. All, all of that, or at least the shelter piece, and right now the contracts that we have for things like. The elementary school food and everything else and our contract with DOLA all expire. Um. So. Figuring out how to maybe do a little bit of transition where we're still providing breakfast and, and what have you. Um, but not necessarily providing. Two meals a day per person for the duration. Um, it's very expensive. If. For the less expensive way, not the volunteers, but if we hired a vendor. Um, between the meals. At dinner at the elementary school and the grab and go breakfast burrito idea. Out of the two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, it's about a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Um, that gave me great pause. Um.
So you'd like direction on whether to keep focusing on breakfast or not? That's a.
Well, I, you know, and, and, and with that, there are some other things that we're not providing.
Yeah.
Case management, for example. Um, even with some of the organizations that might provide case management, like recovery resources. Who we do have a contract with, although I haven't seen the signed. Uh, fully signed contract yet. It's probably my email. Um. We could hire them with additional money to do case management and try to get people referred to. Different organizations and what have you. As of right now, we have, excuse me, we have not done that. Um, one thing to keep in mind about this population, which Colin knows very well, is that. The majority of these individuals. Are very young. Um. And so. Some of the judgment calls that they make and some of the decisions that they make for themselves are not necessarily the most mature. Um. And they don't really know how to be grownups in a foreign country. Um. And. Become self-sufficient. So I'd like a little bit of guidance from the board about how far we want to take this. And what we're willing to provide. Um. Before I move forward on any of those, what I would call, for lack of a better word. Additional functions or, or benefits. Um, especially considering that the minute we get these other two shelters open. We're going to be planning how to wind them down.
Okay. Um, thank you for the update. Um, if I find questions or comments on, uh, some of those items. As far as, uh, priorities beyond, uh, if anything, priorities beyond, uh, night shelter. Dinner. Uh, safe place to park. Those are kind of our current plans.
Well, it sounds to me like there's some level of counseling that is in order here in order to understand or make them understand. What our expectations are, right? And. Um, I'm not really sure what the chain of communication has been in that regard. I understand that, uh, Voces has. Picked up the lion's share of that to date. Um, it's my impression that they're not doing that anymore or they want to get away from that. So, um, what we don't want is to create a, a set of dependents because of their youthfulness, right?
Mm-hmm.
And that their expectation is that they're just going to be taken care of here by, by mother of Carbondale. That's not happening. Uh, so. Somewhere along the line and sooner than later, that needs to be impressed upon them and I'm not sure what the resources for that. Excuse me, for that. If it's the. If it's the uh Resource Center or if it's an another party. You mentioned that there was um a gal here, a Venezuelan who might be volunteering. Uh, to help with some of that communication. Is that still on deck or is that not?
With, we do have, we do have people who can help with communication. We have a um bilingual, bicultural um communications team. We also have the Shelter Operations Manager that's being hired is fully bilingual and we have Rob Stein still. Um, we will also have um one or two other shelter advocates in the shelters. Manning the shelters morning and evening um who will be bilingual. Um, we have a set of rules, we have agreements that they will, they're gonna stay in the shelter, they need to agree to. And we have had some um. For lack of a better word. Workshops. Both with the police, Rob Stein went and talked to them, Voces, we had a big conversation about cultural norms and weapons. Last week, you know, I understand if I was walking here from Venezuela, I would have a knife on me as well. But we don't want them in the shelters. And and they're not expected to carry knives around with them everywhere that they go here. So you know, those kinds of of communications, we have no problem having. The question is, you know. What is the board's expectation about what we should be doing for them?
And you're talking about more formal case management where, I mean, I I know that like Voces Unidas has done legal aid clinics. And then when a family comes in, there's a staff connects them with the Roaring Fork Family Resource Center from the school district.
Yep.
But are are you kind of asking us like, are would we like to see a contract for individual case management for everybody? Is that?
Yes, I'm not sure whether it would hit everybody.
Yeah.
But for for identifying identifying needs and vulnerabilities and potential for referral to appropriate other. Um, groups. Now, I also know that my contract with DOLA is not for individual people. I can't buy and give somebody a gift card.
But it does mention case management, so if we were providing that as a general service.
Right. But that I started along that thought process when I started thinking about, wait, are we gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars on breakfast?
Right.
Like, can I justify that? And and if we do that the entire time and then we just and then everything just like falls away.
Yeah.
That's not fair either.
Other thoughts?
I mean, I I have to wonder what essentially our end game is here because, you know, talking about dependency. I think we've already created that to a degree. But we've been, we because we've been as as as, you know, welcoming as possible and humanity and dignity to help those who are in need. But that comes at a cost and now, you know, what happens once that that ends? I mean, are these folks who actually can afford to be here? In my mind, I I don't think so.
They're gonna leave.
Yeah, and but but as soon as the warm weather hits, that's not necessarily, that's not a given. I mean, they may, they may just say, oh, well, now I can sleep outside. Now I can, you know, be in these places that I couldn't during the winter. So and because of that youth and that sort of lack of maturity. Not realizing that they're they're not thinking, I think, about like a year from now or maybe even a month from now. Very much in the present. So I I would just urge caution about how we take that approach. It's just, it it's a very, it's a slippery slope, for lack of a better word, yeah. Um, I mean, the only other comment I'll make is about the uh the lot, uh just because having seen how much, unfortunately, you know. Garbage and refuse was outside behind Third Street Center if there's uh additional um, you know. Basically, containers out there for that.
We will put, we put, we'll put additional containers out there, particularly because we do not want them jumping that. Little fence, I'll just call it a fence, and just filling up.
Yeah, that's a good point.
But also um we will, and I didn't say this as part of my update, but um. We still have security, minimum of five hours a day. And he's very good at um just schooling them. Oh, no, 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 you guys gotta pick all this stuff up. And so I I really appreciate that and he's gonna be roving inside and outside. Of both the shelters and the parking lot.
And as far as our end game, I'll just mention that next week, we're gonna dedicate an hour or so on our work session to talking about that. So the hope is that by next week, we've got the the new system in place. And we start, as we've said the whole time, immediately start talking about how do we wind that down? And not return to where this all began with people sleeping outside around town. Marty?
Yeah, a couple of concerns. They're not gonna be allowed to stay in tents.
No, they absolutely won't.
Thank you. Second thing is, we are speaking about providing indoor shelter for forty residents, fifty at the most, correct? What about those people who don't have cars? To sleep in? I mean, we have more than fifty people, we know that. Some of them have cars, some of them don't have cars. Some of them have buddies who let them stay in their car.
They're sleeping, driving a car. We have tried very hard to find additional space.
No, uh, no, I'm not finding any. I know this is, I just say it's a rock and a hard place, cuz that's what it is.
We we had. Somewhere between thirty and forty additional new people show up last week at the Third Street Center. Thirty of which came in pretty much a twenty-four hour period. You know, Denver scraped that encampment of three hundred people.
Did they get turned away?
They did. And um I think a few of them might still be here sleeping in cars. The other ones very clearly said, oh, we're going back to Denver.
Well, and this is something Louise and I had brought up earlier. We wanna do right by these people, but by the same token, we do not want them calling. Their cousins or friends or whatever in Denver or wherever and say, hey, you know, they're taking care of us here. You should think about coming. There's work and there's shelter and there's food. So I'm sorry, they got turned away, but we obviously have our limits. And I agree with Louise that. And with Ben. We gotta start thinking about our end game as soon as possible. To be fair to them and to be fair to us. We can't drop it on the March twenty-ninth, hey, in two days, I'm sorry, there are no more meals, there's no more, there's no more shelter.
Ben had an interesting point this morning when we were talking in my office, um because the. You've probably all heard, everybody says, well, how do they know about Carbondale? Right? Why'd they come here? Who told them to come here? And all we've been told so far is, you know, they were told there was work here. Whether it was working Carbondale, work in the mountains, work in Aspen, in this valley, they were told that there's work here. But Ben made the point this morning that um there is a very clear spot for people to wait. Looking for day labor jobs at Garcia's and everybody knows about it. And I don't know if there's another spot up and down eighty-two that's quite like Garcia's. So that may have been a draw for why they specifically stopped here, but.
There are other places, Home Depot, uh Lowe's are known throughout the country. For a meeting place for day laborers in California and Florida.
Yeah, but it's not like.
I'm talking about here.
Yeah, but I'm just saying.
Yeah.
And I'm sure there are other places here.
So I wanna keep us focused, it is nine o'clock. We haven't heard anything from Colin yet and I'd love to hear from him. He's he's in the thick of this every day. But again, our focus right now is some feedback to Lauren on any of the current things going on, clarifying questions and. Whether we wanna push hard to do things like breakfast and case management or whether we wanna take a more limited approach in this phase. And then next week we'll start talking about the wind down. Um, Colin, thoughts on any of that or any other perspective you'd like to add?
Food up until yesterday and breakfast and dinner has all been volunteer. For the last nine weeks. Uh, I would think there are a lot of volunteers who would wanna participate in the breakfasts going forward. I know the location would be a challenge, but um sure we can figure something out.
I just would pause her there and say, and just see if the rest of the board agrees with that, that our direction to Lauren then would be. The town's not gonna contract for breakfast and spend tens of thousands of dollars on it, but to continue working on potential volunteer. Options, that sounds reasonable to me, if that's been working so.
It seems, it seems reasonable. I think having the food option over at Crystal River takes some pressure off the community in terms of providing food. Two meals a day, every day. There's still gonna be weekends, there's still gonna be uh breakfasts. When, when Lauren, when you put together the DOLA grant, you had mentioned that you had letters that you were gonna send to all three counties. Asking for additional support. I'm wondering what the status is of those letters.
I did not send the letters because we were still trying to determine what our, what the delta was, where the gap was going to be. Um, I did speak to um one of the county managers this week. Now that we have, now that we have a contract with Recovery Resources and with Methodist Church and we know. What's happening with the Third Street Center and everything else, um I'm still sending those letters. They are going to not only ask for funding, they are also going to ask the counties to stand up shelters if they wanna help. What I say to them is not gonna, you know, it's not necessarily gonna make a difference. But when people come here and they can't find shelter and they leave, if they don't go back to Denver. Where they are, I don't know. Are they in Rifle? Are they in Newcastle? What have you? The. I do not, I I know that Denver. Whole different. Denver has an entirely different approach to the shelters. Because in Denver, with the county and the city being merged. Their human services department and um and other departments. Are managing this entire process. And we went to human services in Garfield and they cannot touch anyone who's not documented. Not even if it's, not even for child services.
Understood. It's it's a city and we're we're a rural region. I get that, I get that. But I think um we need to get something in front of them formally as quickly as possible.
End of the week.
Great. I think there's more support from some of our neighbors than and we, but we need to ask.
Yep, well, and I and Picken is still is bringing us forty more pots. And yeah, I had a long talk with John, John Peacock.
That's great, that's great. And it might not be a bad idea to stand up a food shelter. For breakfast if we're worried about where it happens. Uh, I think we should be exploring all those things and I think our partners could help us do that. This problem is not gonna go away. These people are not gonna go away. As long as Denver has this problem, whether we provide services or not, they're gonna come because they're desperate. They, Denver's overwhelmed. People come up here because they look for work. People showed up under our bridge and we offered no services. They showed up anyway because there's work. This is gonna be really difficult for the whole region. And I think the quicker we can ask our neighbors for support, some are gonna say no. But we need to go on record and ask them and ask them for money, ask them for resources so we can help move this forward. Some of them need to stand up their own shelters, some of them need to find places to host ten or fifteen of these folks through the winter. Uh, can't all be on Carbondale, but we're the ones that are gonna have to ask because no one's gonna ask us. No one wants to get involved in this kinda stuff. But it's unfortunately not gonna go away. It's a national problem. And until, even if we shut the border tomorrow, they're all here already. So uh I think we ask for money, I think we ask for money for um for one-on-one services. Voces has done an amazing job trying to work with legal clinics, get people connected to services. Stepping stones has been talked to about some of the people who are twenty-one or twenty-two years old because they can provide services. We need to start thinking collectively instead of just what Carbondale is doing. We're doing a lot of work, but we need to ask other people for help.
Thanks, Colin. I think that's more of what we'll get into next week. I mean, I think for now, um. It sounds like we don't need to get into the breakfast business, but we could help coordinate that through volunteer groups. I don't feel like we've given you good direction on case management. I don't know that we know exactly what that means to say yes or no to. But it seems like from the start, one of our goals has been to help connect people to other services so that they're not dependent on the town of Carbondale. And so that they're able to get work permits and authorization um for their status so that they're able to get work and become self-sufficient. Um, so I don't think we wanna neglect that part of the plan. But I don't know that that means contracting with some nonprofit to do individualized case management, so I. It's probably somewhere in between.
Voces Unidas has two more legal clinics planned, one for February and one for March. And then they're planning to be done, done. But the um. They're only dealing with people who qualify for a temporary protected status. That's not asylum seekers, that's not humanitarian probation.
Parole.
Is that what it's called? Parole? Thank you. They're not dealing with that at all.
Are those people who came and were in the United States before July first?
Those are the people, the Venezuelans anyway, those are the people who qualify for temporary protected status.
And the process, as I understand it, takes anywhere from three to six months and can cost four to five hundred dollars.
If to apply for temporary protected status and work authorization, I believe it costs five hundred and forty dollars. And.
But it's being waived.
Well.
Well, wait, when you say.
They are applying for waivers.
Federal government.
Okay, but they still have to go through the process of the paperwork.
That's correct.
And of course, the catch twenty-two is you have to have documentation to go through the process.
And and. Applying for a waiver extends the process.
So I wanna try to get us focused. There's a lot of detail to this and and a lot of conversation can happen outside this meeting.
I think I have the the guidance that I need.
I would just say that.
Have any questions?
I think we're trying to limit our response. We're trying to move from humanitarian assistance during winter to avoid life safety issues and people dying of exposure. But we're trying to move from that toward. We can't do this forever, although Colin's right, the problem's not going away and we don't wanna be naive about that. But I think our discussion next week is gonna focus on that broader response, what services others can provide. And it seems like some level of case management to help people connect to other services so that they're not just sort of sitting in our shelter. Waiting for something. It is gonna be a, you know, helpful to us. If we wanna try to wind this down, we're gonna have to connect people with other resources.
I mean, to to me, case management needs to come at a federal level. I mean, that that is, this is where that problem began.
Yeah, it all does.
It all does.
It all.
But that's a big one, I mean.
Yeah, they aren't doing any of that.
Doing anything. So to me, it's like ridiculous to try, you know, it's like. I don't know.
Yeah, but I think case management, we're thinking of things like, where could you go to get help finding housing? And where could you go to get help finding, you know, a work permit so that.
We can barely address that for people that are here with resources.
That's right.
And we're trying to give them some other instruction as well, like, how do you register a car legally in the United States? Because they all got scammed when they got here and they thought their cars were registered. Well, at least they said they thought their cars were registered. But um, no, they just.
Can they get bank accounts?
I I wanna cut us off, like, we could talk about this all night, all the.
I'll see if I can get some.
Side conversations are great on this topic. There, there's nothing you can't talk about outside the public meeting. But I feel like if we try to answer all of our curiosities right here, we'll be here all night, so.
There is a big press release going out as soon as I have, as soon as I figure out whether I can open this, this weekend. Or Tuesday or Wednesday, press release is already done, it's just waiting for the number to get plugged in.
Okay.
So that will go out broadly.
Okay. All right, and we look forward to a conversation next week about what's next. Um, thanks, Colin, and everybody at Third Street Center for continuing to shoulder this. I mean, the town's getting a lot of credit for the humanitarian response. But I wanna remind people that really the humanitarian response so far has been the independent nonprofit known as the Third Street Center. Not at the direction of the town, and Voces Unidas um deserves a lot of credit for that as well. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Ben.